Twenty-one June ninth, Educational Support Committee meeting. And today we have a couple of things that we we're looking to address far as um far as things that's going on in the district and Buffalo Public Schools. But first today, I would like to say um um I'd like to say this is um to recognize Pride Month. So for those individuals that that celebrate Pride Month and uh and and celebrate, you know, who you are, I'd like to say um, you know, this is your month and uh anything that, you know, we can do uh to help support, you know, we're always here. Uh, second thing, um, yeah, Dr. Uh, David Russ is on the call right now, and David Russ is going to uh give us a update for today's um for the summer school program uh for Say Yes Buffalo, the Say Yes Summer School Program for the City of Buffalo. So uh, I know David and Dr. Cash, that has been working extensively to provide summer school for our our children um throughout the COVID. You know, it was a challenge to get kids back into classrooms, but they took some time to uh work to create summer school programs for our for children of needs and children that's in our district. And uh, right now, uh, Mr. David Russ will present on the summer school programs.
If I could, if I could lead in, uh, Mr. Hurd, I'd appreciate that.
Oh, yes, yes, that's right. So, um, Dr. Cash, um, is there anything you'd like to start off projecting about um anything summer school program or our outlook for the summer? Thank you, Dr. Cash.
Thank you, Mr. Hurd. Uh, good afternoon, colleagues, uh, members of the board, members of the community. Uh, it is our pleasure this afternoon to present a robust and exciting array of summer programming for our students in the Buffalo Public Schools. Uh, we're pleased as always with our partnership, um, probably our leading edge, top partnership in the country between private organization and a large school district, and that's our partnership with Say Yes. Um, Dave Russ and his team presented to me and to our staff a few few weeks ago, probably two months ago actually now, and asked what what could we do to continue to uh complement what our children need uh coming out of COVID this summer? And David, and I said, Dave, I want you to be a a bright patch or a bright patches in our quilt that we are building for our young people this summer because there's a a large need, a diverse need, and we need to attend to not only the academic uh growth of our young people, but also the social, emotional, uh, physical and uh psychological needs of our young people as well. So David and his team have added two point oh, what we call BPS summer programs, uh, two point oh. We have a total of almost twenty distinct summer programs that we're offering for children pre-K through twelve this summer. And so we're happy to lead off with David and his team. David will introduce his team, and it's just gonna be a wonderful array of opportunities for our young people uh this summer, so please listen up and stay engaged. Thank you. David, thank you so much for all that you do. We really appreciate you.
Well, thank you, Dr. Cash. Appreciate the confidence you have in us and in this best-in-class partnership. Uh, completely agree with you. And Mr. Hurd, thank you for inviting us this evening as well, too. I will just reiterate a a lot of what Doc said is we've got a an important part in the quilt this summer. It's the biggest summer camp we've ever run. The district has made a significant investment in live summer camp for students. Uh, we are aiming to bring the right students into the camps um so that we can catch students up who may have experienced learning loss over the past year. Uh, it's a great opportunity to do so. Uh, and again, we're we're really grateful for the investment that the district has put forward in this as we feel it's gonna be more important than ever coming out of the pandemic for live summer camp. Uh, we've got compelling results we've built over the last few years under the leadership of our uh Director of Extended Learning Time and Quality Improvement, Dan Cross Viola, and our Senior Director for Community Schools, Tanya Staples, where we've got a deck prepared and a really thorough quality presentation to lead. Um, so Dan and Tanya, I will turn it to you. Uh, again, a big thank you to the the full board for your leadership and your supportive important summer work for young people.
Thank you, Dave. I'll share my screen. Well, thank you all so much for for having us here today. Um, my name is Dan Cross Viola, Director of Extended Learning at Say Yes, as Dave mentioned. And thank you so much, Dr. Cash, for that introduction. We we definitely wanted to really play up the fact this is a quilt this year, and we're but a part of that quilt. And BPS has just really demonstrated some strong leadership this year to put together a lot of different robust offerings for students. And it's gonna be a great summer for students across the board, not just what we're doing, but what the district as a whole is doing. I look forward to hearing uh from Aaron and next about the other BPS. To to give um folks a a little bit of a background on on this, we've been doing a citywide uh partnership with BPS since 2015, and it's been for pre-K through sixth grade students, serving average of fourteen hundred students a year at every one site um each year. And the goals have really been threefold. First and foremost, it's about academics. We know that uh summer can be a time when students can and should continue learning and and applying what they learned in the school year so that they can hit next school year uh with their feet on the ground and and good to go. But we know that doesn't often happen, and so we want to make sure that we can put some things in place to to keep that academic growth um moving in our direction. Secondly, it's about health and wellness. We we think very initially about social, emotional learning and uh physical health at these camps. And thirdly, it's about safety. We know that uh it's important for children to have a safe place to go over the summer months where they can be comparing adults. So those are the the three top of mind goals for this initiative. And it is collaborative, as I mentioned, uh, it's not just BPS and CS around the table. It's also the city, the county, parent organizations, the various community-based organizations that we we work with to run the sites is also um and also the philanthropic community. Dr. Cash uh alluded to, we uh turned the page in summer camp, what we're calling Summer Camp Two Point Oh. And when we first started, we had a month to throw together the first year of summer camp, which did not yield, obviously, the the most intentional model. So in 2018, we got a chance to take a step back, look at best practices from across the country, think about what we could do here in Buffalo to make our initiative better. And we said a lot of few different things. Uh, the first was we wanted to lengthen the program day from a three-hour or four-hour day to a seven-hour day, double the amount of time for academics to three hours a day, double the amount of time of enrichment to two hours a day, ensure that all of our students are doing robust, evidence-based ELA and math curriculum, and have paid planning and train time for all the site staffs. So we could make sure that program time was time on task and not time where where uh people were playing catch-up, trying to get ready. We were able to pilot this in 2019 at four sites and really promising student outcomes. We saw that the reading and math um skills that these students at these pilot sites were much more likely than their uh peers at other campsites to maintain and/or improve their their skills over the summer months. And despite the fact these students were doing twice as much academics, they liked camp more. They are more likely to say that camp was fun, more likely to say that they they enjoyed the academic content. We were definitely on to something with that that pilot. So this year, we are pivoting fully to that Two Point Oh model. As far as what the uh the nuts and bolts will be this year, we have a six-week program going from July twelfth to August twentieth. It'll operate Monday through Friday, and our sites this year will have a variable start time. Depending on the site, they'll start either at eight, eight-thirty, or nine AM. And then of our thirty-two sites, nineteen will be seven-hour-day sites. These will serve nine hundred and fifty students with three hours a day of academics, two hours a day of enrichment, breakfast, lunch, and snack. And the other thirteen sites will be four-hour-day sites, serving five hundred students. And basically, this will be just cut in half, ninety minutes of academics a day, sixty minutes a day of enrichment, and breakfast and lunch. Very important to note is that all the academics at all the sites, regardless of how long the the day is, will have the evidence-based curriculum, and it will be led by certified teachers. And then all sites will have enrichment, which must include social, emotional learning and physical activity as well. All sites will adhere to staffing ratios. There's an overall two to fifteen staff-to-student ratio, which includes a one to twenty-five teacher-to-student ratio. And then there is also a site coordinator, which is not counted in the ratios. It needs to be there as well. So to give you an example, it looks like on the ground for a site that has fifty students, there's one-site coordinator, there are two teachers to get to that one to twenty-five ratio, and there's five other support staff to have seven total staff that meets that two to fifteen ratio. As far as the sites where they are and who's running them, we have twenty-two partners running the thirty-two sites this year. You can see the list of who all of them are right there. Most of these are folks that we've been working with for a long time, a few new faces, but mostly uh tried and true partners of ours. And then the map there shows a spread of where they are. The blue sites are our seven-hour-day sites, and the green sites are the four-hour-day sites. We are still in a pandemic, even though we we appear to be turning the corner here, um, and we are taking health and safety very seriously still. We'll have very strict health and safety protocols in place. These are based off of guidance and regulations from CDC, Department of Health, and also Child and Family Services. And it's also informed by the Camp Count Study that the American Camp Association put together after uh twenty-twenty summer camp. They looked at at programs that operated across the country in person last year, looked at the non-therapeutic interventions that they used at those sites to mitigate COVID and found the things that would be most effective. We've definitely relied on that a bit as well, as as well as our own experience with the virtual learning support centers. And uh, where I'm happy to say that we didn't have a single known uh case of transmission of COVID in those centers when we were operating them this last fall. So a few of the things that are accounted for in these these protocols, emergency communications, arrival and dismissal, how daily health checks are done, healthy hygiene. And it's important to mention that all of our staff and students will be wearing masks, even though that uh the guidance from the CDC and the DOH has relaxed uh mask requirements for vaccinated staff, we're gonna have all of our staff still wearing masks to be modeling that for the children. Uh, site ventilation is uh very important. We're encouraging sites to be outside as often as possible, but also if they are indoors, keep windows open, have filters going, all that. Social distancing, cleaning and disinfecting. A restory storeroom is in place in case a child becomes symptomatic of of uh, you know, might be playing COVID symptoms uh and needs to be uh isolated. Room is there until a uh one of their adults can come pick them up. And also, of course, contingency plans in place for uh any confirmed cases of COVID and a going to the site. Also important to know is that all of our sites will be permitted through the Department of Health or through school-based childcare, which uh requires them to do a a bulk of all their health and safety pieces as well. In addition to the program, and that will happen during the program, the hours itself, we do provide a lot of behind-the-scenes support to families. Uh, some of this is basic needs, some of this is is helping to make linkages to things like uh mental health care or behavior support services. Some of it is also monitoring for for abuse and neglect, all of our folks, amended reporters. There are a few key partnerships that I want to highlight. One is one that BPS has had for years with Feed More from New York. Um, just like many of your schools have the backpack program where students can go home with food bags over the weekend, sixteen of our sites this year will have the same program in place. So while the students will have healthy meals, they'll be able to access throughout the week at the campsite, over the weekend, families can enroll to have a food bag go home for that child to have access to other healthy food over the weekend as well. A second partner that we've just moved this year is with Neighborhood Health Services. The Mobile Health Unit, which they operate in conjunction with Say Yes, will be visiting some of our West Side locations to be providing primary uh care to some of the students. The students will get um um immunizations, uh, physicals done, well-child visits, things that will help them be ready to go uh in the fall for the upcoming school year. And a third partnership is one that we've just been doing for years now internally at Say Yes, but we know that a lot of times these sites will encounter uh needs from families that they themselves are not equipped to be able to handle. And so when that happens, they are able to refer that family to one of our family support specialists at Say Yes, who can pick up where the site leaves off and link that family externally to things like food um food pantries, food supports, uh, mental health clinics, case management services, whatever that family might need, that family support specialist can help get that that family. Two other uh important partnerships to of of uh worth mentioning is breaking barriers. The Boys and Men of Color Initiative with the Say Yes, we will be partnering with them this year to offer racially racial equity-themed programming by some of the young men in the program, particularly the sixth graders. And so we'll be looking at the history of racial injustice in our country, what the current state of racial injustice is in our country, how we move past a more equitable society. All those things will be wrapped up into uh two modules for these students, um, and that'll be piloted up to twenty sites this year. And then the other partnership is with the Urban Teacher Academy. As many of you probably are aware, Dr. Harris Tig is very involved in this initiative, partnering McKinley High School with Buffalo State, uh, through which high school students take education coursework and then matriculate onto Buff State's education program. And so new this year, some of these students will be placed in our summer camp sites to assist the certified teachers with implementing the academic curriculum. They'll be acting as like a teacher aides in a in effect at these sites. They won't count towards the staffing ratios of the sites, uh, but they will be an extra set of hands and will certainly be adding value to sites while they themselves are gaining valuable work experience. So we are about a a month away, a month out from the start of camp now, and I want to give you a little bit of a uh a look under the hood of what's uh going on in our summer camp machine right now. Summer uh student enrollment obviously is is uh top of mind. We have fifteen hundred-plus students enrolled already. If you're doing the math, there's more students enrolled than we have slots, so most of our sites actually have waiting lists right now. And the the four remaining sites that aren't full yet will probably be full very soon. Uh, but we are uh nearing the finish line with with enrollment. We are also uh have all of the curriculum in-house for for our sites. We've processed it and gotten it ready, and it's actually going out the door to sites this week and next week. And we're also spending this time making sure that all of our site staff are ready to go. So professional development sessions and everything from uh implementing the curriculum to multilateral considerations, having a complete climate and activities, our health and safety protocols, behavior support, all kinds of topics we're covering with them, make sure that this can be the best year of summer camp yet. Before we we uh before I turn it over, I just wanted to say a special thank you to Dr. Cash and and Bodachelli and and all of you on the board for everything that you all have done this last year. It's been a very difficult year. We've demonstrated great leadership and vision, and I think the decisive mission which you all have moved from prioritizing summer learning this year and the quilt that is putting together is second to none. And we're just very excited to be a part of it and very excited to be able to help advance the district priorities. So thank you so much for your time, and I'm happy to take any questions that folks have.
Thank you. Well done, Dan.
Thank you, Mr. Viola. Is um Mrs. Tanya Staples gonna present now or?
Excuse me?
No, Dan did an awesome job. There's nothing left to be said.
Thank you. That concludes the um presentation. Right now, we open up a Q and A if any board members or anyone have any questions about the the beautiful summer program that's been put together through these um very, very trying times. I do have a hand raised. Sharon Belton-Cottman?
Thank you, Say Yes, um, for your continual continuous excellence. You guys just never, you never stop. Thank you so much for your devotion and for everything that you do. I have two questions, one to you. Are our students being paid that are participating at at your sites? Our Urban Teacher Academy students, will they be paid to participate?
Yeah, they're actually doing it in partnership with the city for Mayor Summer Youth, so they're being paid through Mayor Summer Youth.
Okay, great. The other thing, Dr. Cash, is it possible to allow this activity to be counted toward our students' community credit that's required toward graduation?
I think that's a good question. I like it. I don't know if it will count as experiential credit, something like that. Ann Bodachelli, do you have any thoughts about that? I know we, I don't know any that we've looked into that or we've um made that a part of their curriculum. Uh, Ann, do you have any thoughts, or Tara? Do you have any thoughts about it?
Mrs. Belton-Cottman, are you referring to what sometimes happens with seniors uh for civics?
Yes.
Okay, um, so that's actually not a state regulation, and so a lot of the schools have taken it um as a local initiative. We can discuss that with the different buildings and um and talk to them about what requirements they've given the students.
So as a as a district, we don't have a concise set of guidelines. Each school is allowed to come up with their own. I'm confused with that answer.
So it's it's something that a a district or a school could adopt, but it's not part of the state regulation. Um, so it hasn't been a standard process, but that is definitely something that we can look into if if that's the board's will. Absolutely.
The the reason that I'm bringing that up is is that I feel that there is a need to get our children involved as early as possible in doing civic activities. And um, you know, I think it's just a, I think it's, it just makes sense that if we have children that are uh doing things inside the community, that we might start talking about uh maybe even um expanding it. And I've also even said I'd like to see it start at grades age seven. When most of our kids are being recruited for gang activities, if we could start putting them in some civic activities, we might be able to direct them in a different way. But thank you for that. Thank you again, David, and I appreciate you guys.
Mrs. Cott, on that train of thought, there is a new seal of civic readiness. It's something that we could wrap into the new pilot program that we're starting next year? The seal of civic engagement?
Good, I'd like to know more about it. Thank you so much. I just want to make sure that we grab our children as early as possible and that the activities that they get, that they are rewarded, and that they understand that this is not just an opportunity to make some additional money. This is an opportunity to give back to your community as well. And I'd like to start feeding uh breeding it as early as possible. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, um, Mrs. Belton-Cottman. Uh, next, we have a couple of hands raised inside of City Hall. Um, so that'd be Larry, uh, Mr. Mr. Larry Scott?
Thank you, Mr. Hurd. Um, just first, I I wanna echo what President Cottman said. Thanking Say Yes Buffalo and their partnership um was incredibly essential during this pandemic. I don't know where some of our students and families would be without your partnership, your support, your services. Um, so thank you. And and also want to take this opportunity to thank Say Yes Buffalo and the staff for your role in organizing our virtual learning centers and then in December extending those for the rest of the year. Um, that that was just incredible. I was recently talking to a a partner in Erie County who helped with facilitating those virtual learning centers, and it seems like that's something that was not done anywhere else in this state. So I I commend Say Yes and everybody who was involved in those virtual learning centers because that was just significant for so many students and families. Um, my one question um has to do with the masks. I think, Dan, you mentioned that there will be a protocol for staff to wear masks and students to wear masks, and I'm just wondering um if there's going to be any if there's potential for that to be relaxed if the CDC and uh New York State Department of Health relaxes some of their um policy on mask wearing. And I raise that raise this now because these past few days have been quite hot, and we're hearing quite a bit from teachers and from students, uh, parents about having to wear masks in this heat.
Thank you for that question, and and certainly we are going to be revisiting the protocols with the most recent guidance that came out, especially around being outside. Um, as as folks may know, the CDC and and DOH have recently said that if you have outdoor activity and you're you're adhering to social distancing, you don't necessarily need to wear a mask. So our health uh director, uh, is actually a school nurse, will be starting with us uh next week. And one of the first things on her list will be reviewing our protocols and um with the recent guidance that's come out and uh recommending any sort of changes. But the the masking is one that we'll be looking at. I think the outdoor is probably where we would see changes. I don't know that we'd be looking to make changes indoor, but um I'm not the medical expert. I I will, I will defer to our health director on on that. We'll get information about that out to families. But I have heard from several families already contacting us saying, hey, we know that um CDC and DOH have relaxed us a little bit, we still want to have masks in place. There definitely are families that want that, so we're trying to walk that line of making sure that we are um keeping everybody safe and keeping everybody feeling comfortable as best possible, recognizing that it's gonna be hot and all that as well. So we'll we'll do the best we can to walk that line, um, but uh safety will be top of mind and it'll be the ultimate priority.
Thank you, Dan.
You're muted, Mr. Hurd.
Thank you, um, board member Larry Scott. Very, very good questions about masks, and I know we have a lot of concerns about masks and and uh and the coronavirus, um, and we don't know what it's gonna do this summer or what role it's gonna take or how it keeps trying to uh to redevelop itself. Uh, right now, I would like to say there's no more hands raised uh from any board members, so I just have a couple of questions myself. Um, first of all, I would like to thank Say Yes for all the work that you do in our district. Uh, countless hours goes into planning along with the district to to find means for our children and um giving them a great opportunity for a safe and valued education, mentoring, counseling. And um, I I have never seen a program that surpassed, you know, the work that you guys do, uh, Mr. Russ and Tanya Staples, and also um Dan Cross. And a great presentation. It was so much information in that one presentation and so so many things that, you know, that we dig into. I'm not gonna hold everybody along tonight with this, but um, one thing about um, you mentioned about crucial supports, and one thing I'm concerned about the food. Um, how is the summer program is gonna adapt to the needs for our children with food? And I know that's one of the things that you talk about is food, shelter, and uh family access to resources. So uh, is it gonna be a a breakfast and a lunch that'll be set aside for the children? Or or how will this work with our partners?
So there will be breakfast and lunch and snack at our seven-hour-day sites, and then breakfast and lunch at the four-hour-day sites, and that'll be done in partnership with BPS Food Service. And then there's that the Backpack Program partnership with Feed More to send food bags home with uh students over the weekend as well.
Okay. And um, I'd like for our summer school programs, how was this? How was this actually partnered with our summer school programs uh for children who might need um extra classes, you know, to either graduate or or to um pass classes that they took? You know that COVID had a huge impact on uh children's attendance and and children's grade levels and participation in class. So how will this um work together?
So we actually know we'll be hearing from from Tara and or and or Ann uh next about the BPS in-school offerings, but um, to answer the question, we are comparing enrollment across the two sides to ensure there's no duplication. And if there is duplication, we are encouraging families to to uh go the BPS in-school route since those programs are really tailored uh more specifically to those students' needs. And we we haven't really figured out the exact logistics for doing that just yet. We're going to be uh doing that very soon. Um, but we'll be making sure that uh we're we're working together and and being a real quilt and not duplicating each other's uh efforts.
Okay, so um, one question that that reverted from Sharon Belton-Cottman's question was that um that uh if a child is actually had to go to a summer school program, can they still and they failed a class or they're poorly in the class? And here, uh, Dr. Cash, he was big throughout, you know, two years I've been on the board about enrichment programs. So are they able to still do work, study, and get paid for it? And take enrichment classes that will go towards their grades? Is it set up that way? Can anybody can um answer that?
Mr. Hurd, this is Ann Bodachelli.
Okay.
Um, I think you're talking about some of our older students. I don't know that they would be eligible for the Say Yes Summer Camp. Um, but the students in our program can work with the Mayor's Summer Youth. Um, and we're gonna talk a little bit about some students who might need um more classes than than they might have traditionally had and some of the opportunities for those students.
Okay. Okay, I'll hold off and wait for that presentation. Thank you. Uh, so right now, I'd like to say uh, well, this can, this will conclude the presentation for the Say Yes Education Program, and there's no other hands raised. So uh, I'd like to thank you for all the work that you do, along with our superintendent and administrative staff, to put a program like this together. We know that um working with all different angles with other programs is very difficult, and we really, really um appreciate um this presentation and the work that you're doing. So uh, I'm sure we're gonna take a ton of questions from parents over the next couple of weeks about these summer programs, and um and thank you. I know you guys got your hands full.
Thank you all.
Thank you. Okay. Thank you. Uh, next part of the presentation, uh, we will go to Dr. Kevin Everly from MST High School. He'll be talking about social, emotional, mental health and a couple of great programs that he established there.
Mr. Hurd.
MST.
How are we doing?
We have Buffalo Public Schools' summer programs haven't been presented yet.
Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, Dr. Cash, go ahead, please.
No, I'm, unless you want to take us out of turn, because if Kevin has to be somewhere, then I'm fine with that. I just didn't want you to forget that we have, uh, all of the Buffalo Public Schools programs to be, to be presented, summer school.
I apologize. I apologize. I sent the email. I don't know if you, if you have a chance to read it or not. But, um, Dr. Kevin Everly have, have people that's going to speak today and they are on a time deadline right now.
Yeah.
So we'd like to, uh, Dr. Everly on right now and then we can go back to the Buffalo Public Schools, if, if it's okay with you. All right. Thank you, sir. Uh, Dr. Everly?
Good evening, uh, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you, Mr. Hurd, Dr. Cash. Uh, great support from our, uh, board president, uh, Ms. Belton Cotman and all board members. We, we thank you for your support through these most difficult times we've been having this year. But, uh, as a collective team and a family, we have a MST group in all schools across the district. I, I think we're really showing our, our real stuff here as far as how we're getting all our students and families through this real difficult time. So we appreciate the opportunity to, uh, come in front of you this evening. Unfortunately, I have, I have a presentation. I, I'm, I'm really here, uh, to present, uh, one of our ideas that we had from a tragic event that occurred, uh, a few months back with our loss of a, a, a great senior, uh, Lenisha Johnson. Uh, and I, I want to go on a little bit of what we're doing with her, uh, as far as, uh, talking about awareness and talking about action. We, we, we always talk about awareness and we, we have a lot of events. There's a lot of, uh, telethons and all kinds of things that we go on to with a lot of things that, uh, try to assist in every event. But it really is about awareness and what action we can do. And we think we have something here at MST to really represent not only the, uh, students and faculty of math, science, technology, but the whole entire Buffalo school system and our district of what we're all made of. But what, what I'd like to do right now is we're, we're partnering, uh, let me just tell you just a, a, a small, uh, snippet from the tragic loss of our student last month. Uh, the articles came out about her life and, and a lot of things that came up. I was a little, as a principal, this is my 27th year as a building administrator and I've been in the schools almost 20 years, Buffalo Schools. Uh, I, I was a little, uh, amiffed at the point that, uh, our, our student Lenisha, uh, was just deemed as a black female, uh, who dies in MLK Park and with no name. And I, I've been dealing with a lot of tragedy through my whole career as being a former police officer, counselor, teacher. We've all seen a lot of tragedy through our lives. And, uh, I, I was really, uh, upset with that, thinking that this was just another statistic in the city of Buffalo. And we said, we're not going to stand for it. Ms. Belton Cotman and, uh, ourselves, we all had a, uh, a balloon, uh, release for Lala, uh, just a few days after it. And it was just an incredible turnout between MVP, uh, all our, uh, associates in the east side. And it really was an outpour of our community, which really shows what we're all about as a city of Buffalo and a Buffalo Public Schools. What I have from the articles, from the, the newspaper and the few days, we were all sort of, sort of in, in conjunction with each other. We were actually thinking of each other. Uh, I read the one article of the, uh, Family Justice Center of Buffalo was actually, uh, responding to the different letters and the different elements that were going on with tragedies throughout this district. And we've lost so many students through the years. And we said, you know what? We, we have to team up. So I, I made a cold contact to the Family Justice Center and I met, uh, a woman, Ava Thomas, who we have on screen today, who was absolutely an incredible, remarkable woman that is the operations manager, director of, uh, our, our family center, our justice center. And, uh, Ms. Murphy, Mary Murphy, who was the CEO, unfortunately she was going to be on today, but it was tied up, uh, to tell a little story about the family center. So I, I wanted to introduce, uh, Ava Thomas, who, uh, is going to say a little bit about that center. And then I'll come back on and talk to you a little bit about what we're doing to, uh, uh, really, uh, to reflect on Lala's life and what we're going to do for the Buffalo Public Schools and, and the name of MST and Buffalo Schools. So Ava Thomas, please, if you will. Thanks for being here.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you. Um, so I, um, as Dr. Everly stated, my name is Ava Thomas. I am the operations manager of the Family Justice Center. Um, and sometimes we get a little bit of Family Justice Center, what is that? We realize our name, which, you know, came before a lot of us came on, is, can be a little bit confusing. But we help anybody, male or female, LGBTQI plus, it does not matter. Um, we help anybody that is facing difficulties in their relationship, whether they feel, and what we like to say is unsafe. So domestic violence, abusive relationships can be a lot of different things to a lot of different people. One of the main things that we find as an underlying factor is that feeling of safety. So anybody that feels unsafe in their relationship, either physically or emotionally, we have a plethora of services and supports put in place to help that person. It can take seven or eight attempts for someone, minimum, to try and leave their relationship, their abusive relationship. We understand that. We get that. We sometimes see people seven, eight, nine, 10 times. That is okay. Um, we also help members in the community in particular. We, uh, especially during COVID, we saw a lot of teachers. We helped them with students that they thought, you know, hey, they're exhibiting some warning signs. What can we do? So we can help give you that verbiage, help you, you know, link them with us, which is the ultimate goal, is we want everyone linked with us that is in an abusive relationship. We are able to help draft family offense petitions. We have cultivated a relationship with family court. If those family offense petitions are granted by a judge, we, we help them with emergency hearings. That will turn into an order of protection. And so we're able to help someone with that. We do safety planning and that's a big part of what we do. Especially if someone's not ready to really move forward and, and take the, take all these different steps needed. They just want to talk to someone. That's absolutely fine. But we do safety planning and that's individualized and tailored to that person's situation. And we can do that every day. If someone needs to call us every day and we need a safety plan with them every day, we can absolutely do that. We also, uh, link people with different services in the community. If someone needs emergency shelter, we have Haven House on Speed Dial. If someone is having difficulties, a lot of times of some of our clients, their citizenship is threatened because they are in an abusive relationship. So we make sure that they are linked with the proper channels. They have the proper supports to help keep them safe. Really any barrier that's any, anybody's facing. They need, you know, toiletries, food, anything to keep them comfortable. We absolutely can help them with that. Another unique service that we have is a forensic medical unit. We have a nurse on staff. We are the only forensic medical unit in New York State solely dedicated to domestic violence. So we are able to body map injuries, take pictures of injuries, strangulation assessments. Or if someone, a lot of times when you've been in an abusive relationship for a really long time, there's some physical and emotional aspects that happen after that. She's able to work with that person and, and help them see if that's what's happening. We also have onsite Buffalo Police Officer. In the city of Buffalo, in order to file charges, domestic violence charges against someone, you, you do have to be linked with us. That's a requirement in Buffalo. So we have an onsite officer trained 100% in domestic violence. We also understand that there's a lot of people who have a mistrust in police. That's what we're here for. We, we can help them with that piece of it. Sometimes it's not always necessary to file charges. They're never forced to do anything. Everything is always that person's choice. And we really try to take whatever barrier someone's facing and help them through that. We have non-denominational spiritual support, um, really just a lot of different things. Some things that we don't even know that we have yet. We develop right then and there if it's necessary. Our CEO is fantastic at whatever barrier someone faces. If we think, oh, hey, we need this, then we implement that. Um, so we're welcome to any suggestions all the time. We have a direct referral link with, which I can make sure that, you know, you guys have if you want, where if there's a student that you're concerned about, um, and you get consent from that student, it allows us to reach out to that person. Um, but otherwise due to safety concerns, we have to have someone reach out to us first. Um, so that's really kind of the big picture of, of what we do.
Ava, that's in a nutshell, you, you did, in probably an hour that we were together, you gave it in a ten minute piece. It was, it was beautiful. It was the overview. But I, I, I want to continue on with, with, uh, Ava, without giving up too much, if, if we have another time in a different place, uh, to actually hear her real story. Uh, it's a remarkable, remarkable woman, uh, that is speaking right now. I was very moved by her, meeting her, uh, and what her work is. Uh, myself, our whole administrative team went over to the center and it was just a remarkable, uh, day for us to actually talk and hear the stories of women have been, who've been survivors and what they're doing, their work is remarkable. They, the inspiration that we had with Lala and taking a tragedy and turning it into action is what our next step is. And we're going to be teaming, uh, with the, uh, Family Justice Center. And we have an idea, uh, we're naming it, uh, Letters for Lala, uh, which is very appropriate. We're, we're, we're thinking of all the unknown voices or the unheard voices of young ladies or, or men that are in, uh, uh, really, uh, difficult situations or relationships. We want to have a venue, uh, and a mechanism where with, uh, our support, uh, actually have a venue where they can actually, uh, be supported by our social workers and the, the family center, uh, to, uh, give them support immediately. So we're, we're starting a campaign where we're, we're going to have a portrait of Lala, uh, with a mailbox. And we're going to have, uh, the symbolic piece of the mailbox with letters of Lala and have a QR where literally students in a, in a confidential way can actually use their cell phones or actually go in confidence with a, a small piece of paper with a letter going into the mailbox to actually state that I do need help. Uh, the QR code will actually go directly to the family center and directly to our social workers at MST. We believe that this is the first start and the foundation. We think we should be the parent of this, uh, foundation. We think this could actually go national, uh, for a campaign for domestic violence, especially with young ladies and, uh, men who are in these, uh, situations and bring more than just, uh, awareness, but bring action to this. And we can bring assistance in with this organization and with our social workers and the support of our entire, uh, faculty. Uh, I, I'm fortunate to have one of the greatest administrative teams in the city, Ms. Womack and Ms. Cosgrove. Ms. Cosgrove was talking about, uh, the whole, uh, mailbox idea and it just morphed into just this massive idea. So we're in the infancy part to this, to partner with, uh, the Family Justice Center. And Ava and, uh, uh, Mary Murphy love the idea. So we want to continue on with this story and keep you abreast. We have Domestic Violence Month is October's of each year. We are absolutely going to bring this into the next school year. Take it in the month. We have a whole campaign that we're going to have a, an actual symposium where they'll be coming and presenting and actually showing, uh, us what to do and helping us and, uh, helping, most importantly, our students get through the most tough, the most difficult times in their lives, uh, especially after this past year. So it's just a remarkable, uh, program. So we're really excited about it. And we appreciate, uh, you having given us the opportunity to explain to us where we are and our, our plan and our path, uh, for success for our students and our student body. We thank you. Thank you, Mr. Hurd.
Thank you, Dr. Everly. And thank you, um, Mrs. Ava Thomas for the work that you do. Right now I'm going to, um, open up the floor to any board members or staff members that would like to ask any questions, uh, pertaining to, um, this presentation. And as I look currently, I don't have any, I do have one hand raised. Uh, is, um, President Sharon Belton Cotman's? You have the floor?
Thank you, uh, Board Member Hurd. Uh, Dr. Everly and, um, and Ava Thomas and, um, and your staff, I really appreciate you guys, uh, taking, uh, something, uh, tragic and making something, uh, positive out of it. Dr. Cash, I had not spoken to you yet, but there is a, um, a, uh, domestic violence walk. And, uh, Kevin, uh, Dr. Everly, I hadn't spoken to you. That's going to be on June the 26th. And I was hoping to talk with you about seeing if maybe some of our students would walk. Um, this particular, uh, is this the first one? And it's for domestic violence. Um, this particular woman was killed a year ago, uh, uh, under, in a domestic violence situation. I am amazed at how many young people are being abused. Um, how many young women are being abused? And if you remember that day, when I had the opportunity to speak, I said to the fathers in the group, you know, stop putting your hands on your daughters. They're interpreting that to mean that you love them. And people hit, who hit them, their fathers hit them. And all of a sudden they think that they're, that somebody loves them. And so domestic violence is up in our teenagers and, and the numbers are staggering. So if, if possible, Dr. Cash, when we get a chance to talk, maybe on Friday, we can talk more about this. And, um, and, uh, Dr. Everly, to see if any of your students would like to walk. I was thinking about walking in this particular, um, uh, walk, because, um, I can remember as a, a child, things that happened, um, around me in my family, as well as the women who were abused around me. And I would like to, you know, make a statement and stand with, uh, people against domestic violence. So we'll talk more about that. But, uh, thank you for taking something, um, so tragic and, and making something positive out of it. My only other question, um, at the, um, balloon, balloon release, uh, there was talk about having a memorial for her. Do you know if that had been planned yet at the memorial for Lala?
They did, they did have a funeral and memorial. They, they, they thought it was going to go later, but they, uh, did have one, uh, a week after. They did have one.
Oh, it's okay. Cause I thought she said it wouldn't be until...
Yeah. It didn't look like it was, but we did have a memorial. I was, we were at the funeral home and, and it was, it was very nice ceremony. Uh, they did a, uh, very nice job. Yeah.
Okay. Do you know if any of the men in the community have reached out to her, to her brother? I was concerned for him.
Well, it's interesting you say that, because when we were with each other all day with Neil Dobbins, uh, the, the people approached me on that, uh, from that, from Neil's funeral. So, uh, there are, there are elements in the work that they're trying to right now, but they're sort of fragmented a little bit. So we are still trying to regroup with that, with, with her brother and her sister, her twin. You know, she had, she had a twin sister. So it was very exciting. Can I do a sidebar here? And Ava, if you'd just say one thing of a negative event, a tragic event. Ava, could you, could you let everybody know the percentage of phone calls that came in the day after and that week after a Lala's death of what actually came into the center? You talk about awareness and reaction. What, what the percentage was like off the charts as far as how many started calling into the center immediately from that event?
Yeah, we, we actually, when we go back through our records, there were 23 individuals that reached out in, in direct relation to hearing that story. Um, and those were adults and teens and teachers as well. So, uh, our calls were increased that week in general. Our calls are up 74% since COVID. It has not stopped since, even though we're kind of coming out the other side of that, our numbers are still extremely high. But there's a total of 23 people within the 10 days of her death that received services and got help. And that's, I, I mean, that's remarkable. Yeah.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you for all you're doing. And I'm interested in helping you in any way that I can. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, um, President Belton Cotman. And I don't see any of the hands raised.
Dr. Cash, his hand is raised.
I'm looking, no, I'm looking at, okay, Dr. Cash. Sir, you have the floor, Dr. Cash.
There's a board member that I did, that you didn't see that I'll wait till the board members have a chance.
Uh, I was looking, but, um, Larry popped off the screen. Okay. So, uh, Mr. Larry Scott?
My hand's not raised.
Okay. All right. Okay. For yours, Dr. Cash.
Okay. So colleagues, uh, Dr. Everly and Ms. Thomas, thank you so much for that compelling, uh, presentation. As we are building the scaffolding for our work with the ESAR funds coming in, begin to climb out of COVID and help our young people. One of the major five, top five big buckets, and then those break down into a lot of sub-objectives and subcategories. But one of the top, top fibers, strategic investments in student support services, including students who've been affected by trauma, anxiety, uh, mental health issues, depression, uh, relationship abuse, domestic abuse, uh, eating disorders, so forth and so on. So the whole category of emerging data that has gotten even more acute post-COVID, um, is already there for many of our young people before COVID, but it's becoming more acute post-COVID. there for many of our young people before COVID, but it's becoming more acute post-COVID. So what we've committed to and what we've been talking about is legitimate, strong community partners that have a special focus on these kinds of issues for our young people. We want to partner with you. We want to partner with you. Everybody we won't partner with, but those that, that is the mission and the vision for their work that aligns to what our young people need based on data, we want to have a very strong partnership with you. So that's, that's, that's what I'm saying to you in short. I look forward to working and talking more with Kevin. And we want to build something not only for MST, but for the whole, for the whole history in this particular area of strategic investment. And you may be one of many partners because the issue is so large, it's so big, affects so many of our kids, too many of our kids and families. But I'm glad to learn about you. I didn't know about you before tonight. And so just know that we will be reaching out and working with you as well as the Family Court and other partners that we already have a partnership with. But welcome to the fold and keep up the great work that you do on behalf of young people.
Thank you. And I'm sorry, just really quickly, they don't have to come in. We're doing everything remote. It's very helpful if you just say, you know, you can just have a conversation with, with an advocate and that's as far as it can go. We find that really helpful. It's very scary. This stuff is scary for adults. It's very scary and intimidating for children. So, you know, they, just reaching out to us does not mean it offsets a whole bunch of other things. It's just a conversation. So.
Thank you.
Thank you for everything, Dr. Cash. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Cash. And we do have another hand raised. It's our board member, Hope J. Hope J, you have the floor?
Hi, I just wanted to say hello to Ava. Ava and I have worked together because we've had opportunity to have our careers overlap. I'm not sure if everybody realizes this, but domestic violence is also what my, my career is focused on, specifically working with victims of domestic violence. And recently, in the last year, have founded a nonprofit that works exclusively with victims of narcissistic abuse, which is a little bit of a niche area. We don't do the exact same thing that the Family Justice Center does. We kind of complement one another, but we also have many resources. I have fantastic providers who work with me, people who are well-versed, who have a ton of experience in the field of domestic violence. And between myself, I've been a prosecutor in the domestic violence unit. I have worked in the field of domestic violence as a social worker and as an attorney my entire career, which has spanned 25 years. So I'm kind of, you know, a little sad that I wasn't asked to present tonight or asked or pulled into this particular topic because this is my area of expertise. I speak about this all the time. I'm constantly being asked to speak. I'm on podcasts. I do videos. I put out tons of information for Center for Hope of Western New York. And I'd be more than happy to work with the board, the district, or in conjunction with the FJC and bring some of our providers in as well, specifically to talk about. And I think, Ava, I got kicked off the call for a while, so I didn't get to hear a lot of what you said. But I don't know whether or not there was discussion about covert abuse. And a lot of the, you know, particularly with adolescents, they don't recognize when they are being victims of covert abuse. A lot of it is psychological, it's mental, it's emotional. There's tons of signs that happen early on in relationships. It's power and control dynamic that happens, particularly with teenagers. In the beginning, they don't see it as abuse. And I think before there's even episodes of physical violence, if kids are able to, you know, are educated on what to look for in the signs of these types of relationships as they're developing, I think that they would be, have the language, they'd be more able to be able to seek help, to be able to go to somebody and reach out. Oftentimes, people, adults, adult women don't realize that they're in abusive relationships until and unless there's physical violence. And oftentimes, physical violence is not happening in the early stages of these relationships. So I just wanted to put that out there. I missed a lot of what Ava said. I apologize. I got kicked off the call.
Okay, thank you, Board Member. Thank you, Board Member Hope J. We do, I do, would like to say, I do apologize, Hope J. I did reach out to you. I did reach out to you last month and we spoke about all speaking on behavior and domestic violence. And I did, it slipped my mind this month to ask you. So I do apologize. And I know that this is something that is entrenched in you and that this is something you have dedicated your life to. So at this time, I'd like to move on to another board member who has a hand raised, and that's Dr. Kathy Evans-Brown.
Thank you again. My sentiments are the same as Dr. Cash and Hope J. Hope hit it on the nail. We need to educate young people, particularly girls earlier on. Just the other day, I had a conversation, well, overheard a conversation with my grandchildren. I have a granddaughter who's 11 and I have four grandsons, four and under. And so they had this conversation, the four-year-old, they're all boys, four boys. And they were having this conversation about not to hit Brianna. Don't hit Brianna hard. Now Brianna's 11-year-old. And so one said, well, we can hit her just a little hard. And so Brianna looked at him and said, how about not hitting girls at all? And so it was, it was funny in that sense because she's aware that it's inappropriate for boys to hit girls. And so when we talk about educating young people, we really have to start as young as four years old, believe it or not. And so that's my two cents. I think it's important. And someone mentioned this and it's true. In our community, young people don't even realize what's a good touch, the signs, you know, et cetera. So it's important that we continue this conversation. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Dr. Evans-Brown. And there's no other hand raised. So first of all, I would like to start by saying, thank you, Dr. Kev Everly, for having the mindset to reach out to an organization like the Family Justice Center and reflection to the violence that goes on within your building and your schools. And that just shows the, your character and the love you have for our children. And I really honor and respect that you reach out for services to help your children. And just know that our children are, you know, I respect it to go to school, take exams, do good grades, and they go through different patterns in their life and different type of abuses, physically, mentally, and, and also peer pressures that comes on to our students. And we expect them to, after going through all these different things, for children in inner city and poverty, to come to class, take exams, get good grades, come to school every day, and perform well without any incidents. And that's something that as a district and as a person, we take a strong stand on and get to understand the needs for our children. And that's why I'm really happy with Dr. Cash and some of the programs that this administration put together to try to address these needs. And thank you for your work, Mrs. Thomas, for, for dedicating your life to something that you see that you're so passionate about and have a great, great attachment to. Some of these things that, that we see, that this is very serious matters. And our children are being affected, our teachers are being affected, us and our families, I'm sure everybody has seen some type of violence that stemmed from mental illness, drug use, or just behavior, behavior issues. And one thing that this district has done was look at the youth risk behavioral surveillance model and the survey that's being done. And, and we right now, like I said previously, that we're looking for the end of our YRBS reporting to see what, what needs our children have. And this all stemmed from violence that's maybe come, that maybe triggered tobacco use, alcohol, drug usage, sexual misconduct behaviors, dietary, Dr. Cash earlier, physical activity, obesity, overweight, all these things are side effects of being abused and, and how to see and identify these things. Abusive relationships, mental illness is a very, very common thing. If you look at our police departments and reports and arrests, and I myself was a, said as a liaison in the court that took pleas over 40,000 felony cases in the state of Georgia. And a lot of those cases stem from violent, violent acts. I do have a question. I do really love the Letters for Lala in the mailbox. I know that Dr. Everly said that he has, working with the school district and other districts around City of Buffalo with that. Now, are we also equipped to address bullying and anti-gang limitations with these letters? How, how can we get those disseminated to the right places so that we can help students? Because I'm sure that more letters are going to be dropped in than just domestic violence into these mailboxes.
Yeah, I, that's why we're looking at it, starting off with MST and starting off with our school district. We were going to start off literally having a mailbox in every high school and literally bring it through to all our schools and spreading it out into Western New York from there. But absolutely, we're thinking there would be an offshoot to that, that it'll be more, you know, beyond just the domestic violence, but send a message to any violence and any issues. The anti-bullying campaigns and the bullying campaigns certainly are a mainstay that we have to, we have to address also. And that can go hand in hand with the domestic violence. Absolutely.
Thank you. Thank you. And also like, I know that Erie County has a hotline for, for mental health or domestic issues or incidents. And I also know you can call 911. I would love to see how our district utilizes those tools and work with Erie County to help with those and also programs like, like the Family Justice and things that Hope J worked with. Now, the Hope J is very, very a humble person, but she was also out there with myself at MST when we did the balloon release for Lala. So I'd like to, you know, also thank Hope J, you know, for, for being here also and, and, you know, to give her time, you know, for something that's so serious. At this time, we don't have any more questions. So I would like to go ahead and turn it back over to Dr. Cash.
Thank you. Thank you again.
Yes, thank you, colleagues. Very compelling, very well done. We look forward to the work ahead. So summer programming continues, and I'm very pleased to introduce to you tonight, colleagues, someone you don't see often, but I can tell you, she is a titan. She does yeoman's work. She's, she's an irreplaceable. I've known her now for four, five years. We elevated her to the role she's currently in. And she is a go-getter, workhorse. And we really love her work on behalf of our children. So Ms. Tara Sims, along with Ms. Anne Botticelli, will share some of the other parts of the quilt that we have designed for this summer for our students. Much more robust, robust program than ever before in the Buffalo Public Schools. And we're going to be studying it and assessing the effectiveness of these programs and then continuing to build on into the fall in our ELT program, our Extended Learning Time program, which Tara Sims is the executive director for. So literally, you're going to see programming coming out of the summer that is after school, at least five days a week, two hours per day. You're going to see programming for four hours on Saturday and from about nine to one in some schools and 10 to one in other schools. Very important work. And again, much of that is in collaboration with our partners, say yes. So we'll give the Lord the Sabbath day, and we won't ask students to be in programs, but they will have to study that evening to catch up. So I do expect two hours of study on Sunday after, after their faith services, faith-based services, whatever that might be. So Tara and Anne, you take it away on the summer programming that BPS will be the lead for.
Cash, Admire, can you pull up our presentation, please? Well, good evening, Board Members. I'm going to talk to you a little bit to set the framework for our summer learning programs. And then I'm going to turn it over to Tara to give you some intimate details of some of the other programming. So next slide, please. As always, we connect all of our work back to the education bargain. The most obvious idea here would be extended learning time, right? So Tara and her team oversee our summer programming as well as our extended learning time after school during the school year. But this year especially, we want to make sure that everyone sees the connection between our summer programming and our rigorous early elementary education, our strong community schools, our innovative high schools, services for our needed students and families, as well as the relationship with our teachers, because it's all interconnected throughout this year and especially during the summertime, because we want to make sure that we're jump-starting the acceleration for our students. Next slide, please. So you know, you've seen our Student Success Plan before, but we just highlighted a few areas that are really directly tied to summer programming. The most obvious is 4E, increasing opportunities for student success, because that directly relates to the after-school programming and the summer programs. But also, please note that academic achievement and universal access, these are directly tied to the work we're going to do this summer. Next slide, please. So a brief overview of our Pre-K 6 program. So it will be full day and it'll begin on July 12. We have several, several hub sites, one of which does combination of in-person and virtual opportunities for students. Our programmatic focus is acceleration, enrichment, and social emotional needs of students. So our curriculum and our instruction is really going to target the most essential components of the math and reading curriculum for that particular grade level. So a student who's finishing second grade will be working with the most essential components during the summer program for second grade to make sure that they're ready to jumpstart the school year. We're going to focus very, very tightly on the foundational skills that are necessary for success at different grade levels. So that would include phonemic awareness, phonics, writing, vocabulary strategies, building the background knowledge that students need, and obviously our numeracy skills in the math program. We will also make sure that there are social emotional supports for our students. So we have social workers in the program. We will have speech pathologists supporting the program. We'll have OT and PT opportunities for students, and those will be infused into regular class time. We definitely can't lose sight of our CLRI initiative, so that will be embedded in the program as well. And there'll be various enrichment activities such as art and phys ed, because we know we want to capture the kids' attention. There's going to be a strong focus on academics, and we're going to make sure that we're serving the needs of our students, but we also want them to be engaged beyond the traditional academics. So Tara's got some great things going on with, you know, with art and different programs that are going to support the kids' needs, some STEM opportunities. So we're very excited for the enrichment components as well. So kids have been identified for participation based on multiple factors at the school level. But families can still contact their school or Tara's department if they want additional information. Maybe they haven't been contacted by the school, but they think their child would benefit from the program. So those, those opportunities are still available. And on the, one of the final slides, you'll see we've posted the contact information for the Department of Extended Learning and the link to our website that shows the different programs we'll be offering this summer. Next slide, please. So our Grade 7 and 8 program is a blend of half or full-day sessions, depending upon the needs of the particular student. So again, we have some hub sites and we do have a virtual option. The programmatic focus is really on the essential content for the four core areas. So depending on the student, they may be taking an English class or a math class, a science or a social studies class, maybe multiple classes. But we're going to make sure that they focus on the essential content for those courses and that they're able to recover their incomplete learning. Students are going to be directly identified by schools and contacted by the school to enroll in the program. So the So the Pre-K 6 program, they've been enrolling for the past couple of weeks. This program have recently started to send enrollment forms home. So again, we're still working with the families to make sure that they register their students. Next slide, please. The Grade 9 to 12 program is unique this year. Traditionally, this has been a hubbed program, but this year, we're bringing it to the school level. So each high school will be running a unique program to meet the needs of their own students. So at every district high school, we'll make sure kids have the bus pass that they need it. Again, depending on how long they're there, they're getting breakfast, they're getting lunch, they're getting snacks at the elementary. Our programmatic focus here is to help kids recover the credits that they need to be successful in school and to graduate on time. So we have two strands. They might be recovering a credit if they have incomplete learning, or if they are behind and don't need to recover a credit, they may be able to take an accrual course to help them get back on track toward graduating with their cohort. So the high schools are creating their own schedules, so it'll be a little bit different at every building. But they will be notifying students directly of the courses that the student will be asked to participate in this summer. And then Dr. Cash and the Mayor's Summer Youth Program have collaborated so that certain students are going to be eligible to earn while they learn. So in some cases, a student may have to recover a number of classes and won't be able to work the Mayor's Summer Youth in the traditional way. So we're going to make sure that that student is still compensated fairly for the work that they do, which would be, in this case, attending summer school. So that's a really fantastic opportunity, and I know Dr. Cash may want to speak a little bit more to that later. But most students, if they only need to recover a couple of credits, they could still participate in the traditional program, or if they don't need to attend summer school at all, they obviously could still participate in the traditional Mayor's Summer Youth Program. This is a new take on that opportunity. Now I'm going to turn it over to Tara, who's going to talk to you about some of our more specialized programs.
Anne, so for those of you who don't know me, my name is Tara Sims, and I am the Director of the Extended Learning Department. And we are fiercely planning this summer program that I think all students will benefit from, and we're just really excited to roll it out soon. Admiral, next slide. So the multilingual, I'm sorry, the Special Ed Department will oversee the extended school year program. And this program will run from July 6 to August 13, and there will be hubs throughout the city. Really, the focus of ESY is to prevent substantial regression of students. And students who are eligible for this program are determined by the Special Ed Committee. Students who do not take the New York State Alternative Assessment will partake in the curriculum that we offer for our regular program, whether it be for Pre-K through 6, 7, 8, or 9 through 12. Next slide. The next specialty program will be the Se Levanta Program and the Jump Start Program. These programs are overseen by the multilingual department. Both programs will run for five weeks and be housed at School 45. Although they are at the same building, the programs are very different. Se Levanta is for students in grades K through 3. And this program really focuses on the developing academic language for Spanish. And also, they will complete projects in Spanish and English. To be a part of this program, you must be enrolled in a dual-language program. And then the Jump Start Program, they will focus on the individual small group instruction and work collaboratively on special projects. For this program, it is offered K through 12. And there's multiple factors, I guess variations, where a student could be enrolled in this program, one being if the student arrived during or after July 1, 2019, if they scored an entering or emerging on the NISA test, or if they were recommended by their school staff. Next slide, please. So our arts enrichment program is back. So Michelle Augusto will be overseeing our Mural Mania program and Woke Words. Both of these programs will be from July 19 to August 13, 9:00 AM till 12, and housed at School 18. So Mural Mania, I'm sure you've seen it before. It is show-stopping, but it is a mosaic-type mural, and this year, it is going to be at the foot of the Ferry Street Bridge. And the mural really is based on the history of Project Park's culture. And then Woke Words, it's a really unique program that takes into account writing and theatrical performances. So students would be including rhythm, rhyme, or expression. Both of these programs will be unveiled at a family fun night at Project Park in September. So that will be two really great unveilings and great programs for our students that, once the unveilings, we get the dates, we'll be sure to share those. Next slide. So the Athletics Department will be offering summer camps for Grade 7, 8, and also a strength and conditioning program. For Grade 7, 8, the dates are July 12 through August 20. And as you see, the times are 12:30 to 3:30 PM. The times were strategically picked because we wanted to make sure that students who needed one or two courses still had an opportunity to recover those classes and then also attend the sports camp. And locations are throughout the city. Cecily and her team picked these locations so they were easily accessed. You know, we have at All High Stadium, City Honors, Hutch Tech, Johnny V Wiley, McKinley, Riverside, and South Park. So getting out of summer school at 11:40 for the 7th and 8th graders, they can grab their lunch if they want and go, and then be to the sports camp by 12:30. And these programs really focus on the fundamentals and just having fun. So they'll be offering flat football, swimming at City Honors, cheer dance, track at Johnny V Wiley, basketball, soccer, and volleyball. The 9th through 12th program is going to focus on strength and conditioning. And I know visiting the after-school programs, the older kids like to go to the strength and conditioning workout rooms and also, you know, really talk with their friends. But with this said, it was really planned so students can prepare for the upcoming fall season. And it's a great opportunity that, you know, we wanted to catch these students during summer because we know during the pandemic, there was a lot of, I could say that, you know, students lost maybe some of their physical activity. So this is just an added effort for students in Grade 9 through 12 to have a place to go. The dates of this program will be July 12 through August 20 at multiple high schools across the district. Next slide, please. My Brother's Keeper. So Dr. Fatima Morale and her team are very excited to have this program back. And it'll be in-person at McKinley. The dates of this program will be July 26 through August 7, from 9:00 AM to 3:00 PM. And the theme this year for MBK is Dancofa, and that means learning from the past and building the future. So with that said, they will have multiple opportunities during this program for mentoring. They will be going on field trips and also have leadership skills development. Enrollment of this program is from the schools below, and you must be a rising 7th or 8th grader to attend. And this program does continue from the month of October to March during the regular school year on Saturdays and in some of our after-school programs at these schools. Next slide, please. So the next programs I'll be speaking about are CTE programs. So the two programs you see here are housed at the Bennett Campus. The first one is the Middle Early College Program. This is in conjunction with Buffalo State College. And during this program, 9th and 10th grade students have the opportunity to take physical education and get the credit. By taking physical education during the summer, this allows students to earn the credit. And by their senior year, they would have more time on the college campus. For 11th grade students, they're afforded the opportunity to take two college classes. So that is a potential of six college credits. And then that also equates to one high school history for credit. That would be towards their college graduation or the high school graduation. And then to qualify, you just have to be a current 9th through 11th student. The Research Lab, their program is in conjunction with the University at Buffalo. And Angela Khan is very excited this year that she'll be able to invite 9th graders from last year. Because of the pandemic, they did not have the program. So the enrollment for this upcoming year will include the incoming 9th graders and the current 9th graders. This gives the opportunity for incoming 9th graders to really see what her program offers, the school program offers that focuses on research, community partnerships, and project-based learning. Next slide, please. Okay, the next four programs are our CTE programs. For all of these programs, to be eligible, you must have applied for the Mayor's Summer Youth Internship Program. The programming must also align with their CTE coursework. And the hours that they work at these specialty programs will go towards their CTE. They need 54 hours as a requirement. Those hours will count. So our first program is the Buffalo School of Culinary Arts and Hospitality Management. And that will run from July 6 to August 20. Students will be able to work in the culinary field. So yes, they get the experience of culinary, but they also get the self-skills of, you know, communicating with customers, running a restaurant. So I think that's really important as well. We're giving the students the opportunity to actually be in the workforce. And the next program is similar, which is the Emerson School of Hospitality, which really is the same alignment. The kids are getting the same experiences for culinary, but also getting that, you know, work experience that goes a long way. Next slide, please. The North One program is actually run at that campus, and that will run from July 12 to August 20. This program is divided into five modules representing the programs offered, which is electrical, machine tool, technology, and welding. Again, to be enrolled in this program, you need to, and must align with your CTE coursework. The next program is the AMP program, also known as the Advanced Manufacturing Program. And this is in collaboration with Alfred State. Students in the morning will receive academic enrichment in math. And then in the afternoon, that's when mechanics comes into play, machine tool operating, and welding. Next slide. And lastly, you know, this is, the summer school planning is really a labor of love. There's a lot of departments that we're working with on a regular basis. And we can't say enough about the IT Department, food service, transportation, and the student support team. And that's where we are working on our health and safety protocols. With this said, right now, we know that we are pressed on the most up-to-date information. So as of right now, these are just some of the protocols that we have in place, and we're still developing them as summer school gets closer. So we will continue for our daily protocols for cleaning will remain in effect. We will have a nurse at each school. We think that this is very important and necessary to run a successful summer school. And the medical team will continue to monitor COVID data and test students and staff who have consented. We will have the isolation or cares room at each school. So we just want to make sure that, you know, if a student is in contact with COVID or is symptomatic, that they have a place to go, and we keep everyone safe. Daily, students and staff who report to the buildings will be screened. And we will continue to wear masks indoors. Dr. Cash today has sent an updated guidance on this. And within the next two weeks, we, you know, we determine that we will update the summer school protocols. And lastly, we're just going to really monitor and update the guidances needed as just stated. Next slide. And on this slide is an email, so that email at summerschool@buffaloschools.org. We answer any email that's just related to summer school. We think that gives families easy access and is easy to remember. In addition, there is a phone number that is the Extended Learning Time Department phone number. And then at the bottom is the website that gives information on all the programs for BPS that we're offering during summer.
Thanks very much. We're going to open up to questioning, but I just want to double-check. Correct me if I'm wrong, but the specialty programs you referenced at certain high schools, only students at those schools are eligible for those programs, correct?
That's correct.
Thank you.
Thank you, colleagues. Well done. Thank you. Mr. Hurd.
Thank you. At this time, I'll open up for questions and answers. I'm sure that there might be a couple of questions already, and I have a hand raised from Mrs. Jennifer McCosey.
Chairman Hurd, hi, everybody. I do have a question, and unless I missed it in the presentation, I noticed that any athletics, sports-related, strengthening, conditioning is only geared towards 7th grade students to 12. I'm wondering what's available, if anything, unless it's available during the learning in our Pre-K through 6th grades, you know, for their health and wellness as well. Again, everybody has been kind of cooped up in the house, and we do have, you know, folks that really need to get back out and about. And it's hard right now with little leagues not being able to form due to the COVID and different things that our students are really used to. So I'm wondering how are we, you know, addressing the, you know, you mentioned fun and all these different activities and cheering and all that. Like, that applies all the way down the line. So I'm just really curious as to the offerings of that. And thank you, Ms. Anne, because I really was wondering, you know, some of those schools, particularly middle college, when it said that it was just those folks that were enrolled, because I know they can only take on so many students at a time, and, you know, that's actually what they do. It's why they are who they are, is that 9th and 10th graders, you know, do most of their physical activity and whatnot in the first two years to open that up. So I didn't see that as a summer enrichment program. That's actually the curriculum and how middle college works. So I was confused as to why that was, you know, listed as a summer program.
Okay. Well, to answer your question briefly, there is a physical education component to our Pre-K 6 program because we recognize and we've heard feedback that, you know, kids have been, they haven't been as engaged as they might have been in physical activity in the past. So we wanted to make sure we address that during the Pre-K 6 program. So those opportunities will be provided to kids. And I'm just going to ask Tara to briefly talk about a couple of the other things that they've added for enrichment in Pre-K 6, because I know she's really been busy bringing on partners to support us.
Yeah. So for enrichment, we will be focusing on, we actually have fun theme weeks planned for the kids. So we want them to be engaged coming to school. So the first week that we have is going to be themed "The Race to Reading", and that's where we want to incorporate the Mayor's Summer Reading Challenge. And then we have different enrichment plans throughout the week. And on Friday, we're having, the plan is to have kids come dressed up like as their favorite character. So throughout the week, they'll be building community throughout the theme week. So the first week will be "The Race to Reading". The second week will be a theme week. We know that kids love to be hands-on doing coding. So the Science Department has taken on that curriculum to create, and they are running with it and doing a great job. The third week that we plan to offer is called "Around the World", so this gives kids an opportunity, you know, to So this gives kids an opportunity, you know, to build community within their classroom, telling them about themselves and learning about each other. And then the fourth week will be called Citizenship. So that will give an opportunity for students to always be doing the right thing, sharing with how they contribute to their community. So those are just some of the theme weeks that we have. In addition to when we're speaking about encores, we really are, I'm a sports person. I believe that, you know, really the competitiveness, the teamwork that's involved. So we are offering PE that will be at least two times a week. In addition, we're going to have world languages, which we apply to offer Spanish. We will also be incorporating art weekly and music. So we didn't want to lose sight of the encore subjects. And we are having the academic acceleration, but those things are important as well. We do recognize that.
I just wanted to follow up. Those theme weeks are amazing. And I can see how that would definitely enrich. My son will be attending and I'm excited about that. But I also, because he's in virtual learning right now, I've noticed within his school and many schools that now, because it's hard to do virtual learning for physical education and for those teachers to be able to dress the in-person students. And now the virtual learners don't log in. They basically are just given assignments to kind of do at home. So I just, I'm really concerned about making sure that the physical education, if it's only a couple of days a week, that it's as robust as it would be for the athletic programs that we're offering the seven to 12-year-olds. And however that happens, I understand it's all work in progress. I'm like, just putting that concern out there because Alex can definitely use some more physical education in his life. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. McCosey. I do have another hand raised at City Hall. That'd be Mr. Larry Scott.
Thank you, Mr. Hurd. I just want to first say, I think what you presented tonight is just really a wonderful array of programs for our students to choose from. And I think it's certainly necessary, given what we've been through the past year. So I commend you on all of the options and programs that have been created. And my, I think my question, a couple of questions. As far as registration for summer school goes with BPS, some parents have received the registration forms and have sent them in. And I've seen some wondering when they're going to hear back about, you know, whether that registration has been accepted. And similar to what Board Member McCosey expressed, in the past, we did have sports camps and some art camps for younger students. And I know some parents have reached out inquiring about whether those would be options with younger children. So just want to express that I think there is that need for just sports and art for the younger students.
So I'll tackle your first question, Mr. Scott. So we are sending letters directly to families after they register and it's been accepted. That will come from, Tara, is that coming directly from your department?
Yes, that's correct.
It'll just give them information about the exact details about, you know, Boston, that type of thing. So they should be receiving confirmation. They may not have received yet though, because we've still been accepting the applications. Seven and eight, they're still in process, and nine to 12 is just going out. So they would not have received those yet.
So forthcoming then. I'll let parents know. And then I think the other question I had, last question, you have many more programs added to what was initially shared with us and what's on the website. Will those be added? Is there somewhere else that, for example, the sports camps, if a parent wants to now register for that sports camp, are those going to be added to what we currently have?
Yes. So as things are finalized, the links are going up on the website.
Okay. That is all for me. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. The next hand who I have raised is Sharon Belton-Cottman.
Thank you, staff, for your presentation and your thorough job with our summer school. I am interested in knowing what is going to be presented in September to us after we have had summer schools. What type of student outcome are you going to be able to provide to show that there has been growth amongst our students? So I guess what I'm asking is, are you testing the children when they come in? Or how are you going to be able to do this? Because one of the first things out of the gate is, I hope that this board will be in September, is about student-focused outcomes moving forward, if we are serious about changing this district. And so I'm curious to know what will it look like in September?
Well, let me, let me say something about that. So, first of all, if we're going to talk about the students that enroll and participate fully.
Right.
So it's again, as we said from the beginning, it's a bargain. This is what the district is going to provide and do. And this is what the parent needs to do and what the child needs to do. And if they do that, then the bargain is met and we'll see progress. And we will have ways to measure and assess that progress, pre and post. But it's not acceptable to enroll and then not participate in the six weeks or participate for one week and then skip a week and then come another time. And then maybe not this day and then that day and another day. So, you know, when I, when I was growing up, you get involved in something, my parents said, you don't quit. You stay with it. If you're going to enroll, you're going to be part of it. You're going to be on a team. Then you don't quit. You stay with it. And so that's one of the expectations I expect as part of the bargain from our parents, from our students, that summer programming will only be as effective for you to the extent that you stay with it and that you study and participate and get what is intended from it. And then I think it'll be very rewarding. Now, having said that, Ms. Cottman's question is a good one. And every year, we provide some kind of assessment about who was enrolled, where they were before they enrolled, and what they were able to achieve and grow after the six-week, four-week program. What are your plans on the evaluation of our summer programs? That's what's being asked here. How will we evaluate it? And how will we present and report out about it?
So pre-K six, there's a pre and post-test in place for English and math. The, I have to double-check Say Lavanta, but I know for sure Jump Start also has a pre and post-test. The ESY program is part of their CSU work, their IUP. So that is, they measure that work consistently. The seven and eight and nine to 12 programs will be looking to see which students successfully complete the program. And nine to 12 specifically, they would be earning a credit. So that will be very important for us. Again, we'd be looking at participation, attendance, that type of thing for all the programs. And we'll look to see if students who are there longer are more successful than other students. Well, the arts programs, there's not necessarily a measure that we're using so much as the product. So the kids will be doing a performance or they'll be creating the mural. So every program is a little bit different, but it's important to us that we are looking for success.
Thank you. So in regards to what Dr. Cash was saying, do you think it might be wise or to provide a, some sort of a contract between the parent and the students and the school district that sets the expectations of what we are expecting to do and some sort of a commitment? That was done some time ago. And I think that it allows the parents to understand what is expected of them and what we're going to do and what the requirements are. And I'm wondering if that initially, if we do that extra step, if we might not have higher completion and higher expectations. Because oftentimes, what we see with our summer program is that we have a robust start and then toward the end, we see that it fades. And I want parents to understand that exactly what you said, Dr. Cash, that it's a bargain. And if we do this and you do that, then we should be able to come out with some great results. But if you don't do this, don't expect the same, you know, outcome. So, you know, that's just something I'm throwing out there, that it's just, you know, there's not a contract or at least some expectations that are guidelines or things that are put in place upfront so that people can understand what's going on here, that what your piece of this commitment, what your piece of this pie is. I wonder what you think about that.
I like that. I think, colleagues and President Cottman, that contracts have been around for a long time. And I don't know if you've used them before, but I like them. They sort of set out a, an agreement, if you will, pretty clearly written. It's not very long, four or five bullets. And then you sign. You sign, the student signs and the parent signs. So I like contracts. I think you should consider that, Tara and Anne. And then number two, I like incentives as well. I like incentives. I heard Tara say that each week there will be sort of a theme. There would be an enrichment theme in the camps. And so you could have an incentive for each week, you know, attendance, participation, you know, other variables. And at the end, a wide number of students will get incentives, whether it be computer peripherals, you know, headphones and learning applications that they can put onto their device. And then at the end, maybe even a new computer can be an incentive for the family or for the child, fully loaded with educational materials and books online. And, you know, so that it just keeps you engaged. It keeps you motivated. Incentives are good. I don't want sneakers or, you know, clothing and things like that. But educational-related things are really, really, kids like it and they like to compete for it. Pizza parties, things like that. So there are a lot of things you can do to keep kids engaged. And Ms. Cottman is right. Start with a contract, incentivize along the way. And then at least as a district, we will have done everything we could do to try to keep the children involved and engaged.
Thank you.
Those are all great ideas. I do also want to just share with you that we changed our process this year a little bit more in line with what Mrs. Cottman is saying. So in the past, we allowed schools to register students. And we sometimes found that the school would assume the student was coming, but the student hadn't necessarily committed. This year, we asked families to register their students. So the schools sent the forms home and asked for the schools, the students to commit to the program. So we're hopeful that that will give us a little bit more along what you're talking about, Mrs. Cottman, with that sense of commitment, because you've registered your student. But we can definitely look at some of the other ideas you shared.
Yeah, I'd like you to do that.
Thank you so much.
You're getting a double request there, Anne. And you can imagine which one going to matter most to you.
Good. Thank you. Great, great answers. We still have another hand raised. Dr. Anne Rivera, you have the floor.
This is very quick because actually, Ms. Cottman and Dr. Cash, you just answered my question, which is how are we going to address educational fatigue? And I think, I just want to second that I like the idea of contracts. I like learning contracts a lot as well as incentives. I think that's going to help. And that giving parents that support about how to work with their students too, to keep them moving forward is a really great thing. It's nice to see moving in that direction. Thank you.
That's a great suggestion, Dr. Rivera. Thank you.
Thank you. And we still, we have another question by Dr. Kathy Evans-Brown.
Yes, thank you. I just have an observation. I know I used to run a reading program with one of the first initiatives under the Say Yes Initiative years ago. And what I found was that the parents, we had the contract and we had the incentives, because every Friday we had a field trip. But what I found was parents liked the idea of an extended summer. So say, for example, if we started at eight o'clock to 12, then we got funding from Erie County to do a 12 to five. So it was an all-day program. And we didn't have a problem with absenteeism. And so I like the idea, Anne, that you presented that there's an after, a 12:30 program that starts. So if kids are in a nine to 12 program, they can also participate in the athletic component, whatever that was. I think it was a sports-related program from 12:30 to 3:30. And so, you know, the parents need to be accommodated also throughout the day. A nine to 12 is great, but they also like that all-day kind of thing because they're working. And kids will come.
Understood.
Thank you, Dr. Kathy Evans-Brown. I have another hand raised, once again, by Sharon Belton-Cottman.
Thank you. So I wanted to go back to, and I'm pleased to see that the high schools have, have, all high schools are opening to summer school this year. That's my understanding of what I saw. My concern, however, is that with the amount of money that we received, why aren't we opening the schools to the children? For each school to start in the summer, to start moving their children forward to September? This, to me, looks like what we normally would receive during a year where we did not have an extra or an abundance of money. And what I'm thinking about is, is that if the parents or the teachers are allowed to work with the children over the summer, how powerful that is going to be when September rolls around? And because we have the extra funds, I don't understand why we did not open up the feeder schools as well. Do you understand what I'm saying? I mean, do you understand where I'm coming from with this? Because this typically is how we would normally do it in a year where we did not have an abundance of funding.
Yeah, but we talked about that in the comments.
Yeah, let me say, I'm particularly concerned about the schools that have the higher, higher needs, need students and who have been underperforming, taking them out of their environment and moving them into different environments. I'm really concerned about that we did not do a more aggressive approach to our, our, up to our sixth graders. I'm just, you know, I really am really confused by the amount of money that came into this district. We did not expand that exposure. That's what I'm.
Money is tricky. It's not just about money. You, we have to sign, we still haven't signed an agreement with BTF. They have to sign off on this one with the high school so that we can have the high school teachers teaching in their high school. And that's innovative from what we've done before. So that was designed to take advantage of what you're talking about with keeping kids on track to graduation, keeping them on track with the credits and so forth. So that's high school. I asked the ASLs for elementary whether that would be something that we should do for elementary schools. And then became some logistical issues. There became some fatigue issues, quite frankly, as Dr. Rivera brought up. You know, staff are also tired. And a lot of staff, principals, principal teams, teachers, they're looking for the first time in more than a year of trying to spend time with their family, trying to get some rest and refresh and so forth. So it would be a lot of focus. So it would be a lot of folk that would have to agree to do it at every school for the number of students that are going to be involved. So those considerations were hashed out and talked about extensively at cabinet. Not very much, frankly, that we don't really think about and think about deeply. So Anne, if you have any further comments, and ASLs, you're on the line. If you want to respond for your elementary colleagues, let me know. Anne?
I would just add that we do our best when we staff to make sure that if a teacher works at a particular building, that they try to get assigned there for the summer. And they would be with many of their own students. For example, at 97, the program is housed there. We would try to assign teachers who applied from 97 to that building. But we would probably run into some staffing issues if we housed it at every single of the 40 elementaries. I'm not sure if we would have enough teaching staff able to...
Well, we're pretty sure. Principals were clear about it. The ASLs were clear about it. So that was a big challenge, a big issue. Another issue, though, that doesn't have to be a negative because it's not how many teachers are teaching the kids at every school. Because if you had the same teacher in summer that wasn't effective with you during the year, then you don't want that. One of the questions and strategies that I asked the staff to look into was getting some of our most effective, trying to recruit some of our most effective teachers in, say, 7th grade math or 8th grade English, 4th grade writing in ELA, to do it at a hub where then the kids could be virtual and in-person. And you could still get that good teacher, you know, that top-performing teacher in terms of making progress with kids in a year. And that's some of the MOU pieces that we were trying to work out. So it's more to it than just, you know, having everybody all on deck. I want the best people on deck that can move students quickly in a short amount of time. And that's what the high school principals are going to try to do. They're going to go and try to get their best teachers to teach in the summer school to help kids catch up and make up ground for their credit. So that's what's important to consider here, colleagues.
Okay, so how many children are we planning on servicing in these, in our programs? Do we have a breakdown of that?
So far, 700 is enrolled.
How many?
2,700 are enrolled so far across the spectrum. And we're going to have a rolling fluid enrollment until everyone understands what's available. We still have a, make sure we translate into all the languages, at least the top seven, and continue to get deeper with our communication about exactly what's open. So we'll be having those rolling enrollments right up through July 1.
So what is your capacity? What is our capacity?
So we have 2,700 right now in the pre-K 6 program. But we can handle more students if additional families choose to enroll. So we can add classrooms at the schools that exist. And if we needed to, we could add an additional hub. Remember, they're still enrolling at the 7 to 12, so I don't have numbers for that yet.
What do you...
And then I'm going to let Tara try to answer that one. But then, the issue with 7 to 12 is kids are still, they don't have their final grades yet. So there were just some projections. We don't have solid numbers at this point. There's also the Say Yes Summer Camp, over 1,000 students there as well at the K to 6 levels. So when you look at it in its entirety, we're actually serving a lot of students.
A lot. I want a percentage because here's what my concern is, okay? When I looked at this program, I looked to see, was Ferry District, did we have any schools opening in my district for the pre-K through 6? Okay, the answer was no. Okay? And so, you know, I see the Eloquent. I see South District. I see North District. I see East District. I don't see Ferry District. Okay? And so when we start talking about equity and providing resources for children, and we don't make sure that all of our districts have an opportunity to be represented, that's a concern for me as a Ferry District representative. And as I went through the second list, trying to see, was Ferry represented again for the grades 7 through 8? Okay, the answer was no. Ferry is not listed in there. Now, that may be just a coincidence or whatever, but if we're going to start being fair and start making sure that we start doing things in an equitable way, those are questions, in my opinion, that should be able to be addressed. Okay, and should be addressed before it comes before the board. And so that's what my concern is, is that my district, okay, does not have any pre-K through 6 programs or grades 7 through 8, Dr. Cash.
Okay, well, I agree. If that's not the case, if that's the case, then let's answer that. That needs to get answered. So straighten that out. If there's an ASL on the line, Tara, who has been working with both, Anne, by the cell, talk about it.
We did try this time, air conditioning.
Let Dr. Wright talk. Go ahead, Dr. Wright.
Okay, so to Anne's point, we started with schools that had air conditioning. However, we did not stop there. What we are doing now is we are continuing to collect the enrollment documents from families. And we've already discussed the fact that we may be opening a couple more hubs. We just have to make sure that we have the teachers who are available to teach in those spots. We already have principals lined up who are ready to go. And I have to assure you, Ms. Kotman, one of those schools is absolutely in the Ferry District, at least one of them.
Hot, though.
Yeah, so to your point, we do see that there is a challenge there. However, one of the bigger issues is that, particularly because of the pandemic and keeping the children in the building during this heat, we wanted to make sure that we placed our babies in buildings that had air conditioning first. But as we get overflow, we will open up more buildings, and at least one of them is in the Ferry District.
Well, I certainly need to make sure that when you guys are planning, that you plan equitably for all districts and in fairness in moving forward. And you know, I have been, this is nothing new for me, Dr. Wright. I have always talked about this from day one. And, you know, when I see things like this being done, I have to really wonder if I have to keep my guys up, okay, on a regular basis when I feel that we've put an equity resolution in place and that somewhere along the line, there should be equitable access for all children in the district.
Absolutely. Well stated.
Okay.
But hold on, hold on, hold on. How did we get... It's just a question. Sharon, you were here. How did we get no schools in the Ferry District that were air-conditioned?
Guess what? Guess what, Dr. Cash? When we had an opportunity to do one, the first school that was supposed to be done, the decision was made to do the Child's Jew School, okay? And so they put, moved the resources over to Child's Jew that was supposed to go into the Ferry District. It's not a coincidence that Ferry has always been slighted. When I first came on the board, the record will reflect that Dr. Williams stated that every high school in Ferry was supposed to be closed. And that we had the lowest-performing teachers in the Ferry District. So, you know, it's overlooked. If you take a look at what has happened with Ferry, we had at School 89, we had high-performing special ed classes. All of those classes were removed and put in the North and South Buffalo. There's been a pattern here. And this is why I'm looking forward to be able to sit back as a board member and start advocating for my district and not have to be the face of this board. Okay, I'm looking forward to that because in Ferry, Mr. Ferry, okay, if I had not been on my soapbox and fighting, we would not have gotten the innovative high schools that we ended up with over the years. Because they were shut, all those schools were shut to close. That's the first thing the superintendent told me when I sat down with them. Okay?
Yeah, but I made sure that they didn't go to the...
I know you didn't. I know you did. I'm not saying, I'm not saying we haven't done a great job.
No, no, that's the right fight. So I'm saying, we appreciate you bringing it up. I don't want to see any district not have at least a hub for an elementary school, at least one. We only have, what, six, seven districts in the city? So let's make sure that everyone has at least one summer school that's going to be open. And if we don't have air conditioning, get the fans and get all those things that we need. But there were some considerations, Dr. Wright's right, that we didn't want kids in the heat or in some of these schools that it's already become...
That's a good point.
Already become oppressive.
That's a good point. That's a good point.
Yeah, so we're going to be...
If we get some extra money, maybe we can get some fans this year. Hallelujah. Let's go buy them right now before they all off the shelf.
We're going to get the air conditioning. We're going to get air conditioning.
Thank you, Dr. Cash.
All right.
Thank you. I believe that, I can speak for myself, that I am in agreement with Sharon Bill and Kotman in addressing those needs and see equity in our district. We do have one more hand raised. Are you still, your hand still raised, Paulette? Ms. Woods?
Yes, I just wanted to know if School 17 was under consideration for a summer program? Or is that a problem because it doesn't have air conditioning or whatever?
There were multiple factors that we looked at. And we tried, when we could, not to use a pre-K 4 building because there were 5th and 6th graders. In some cases, we did have to, but that was one of the things that we did think about.
Okay, because I'm getting texts that... I'm getting texts...
I'm sorry, go ahead.
Go ahead. I'm getting texts from constituents asking about that. So what are the considerations that ruled out 17, you're saying?
And then just another consideration, we took into account school size. So already, when we were putting schools, you know, having them, we already had to move one school to another site just to make sure, because of COVID, that we're not overcapacity. So another consideration was the size of the building for summer school.
Well, certainly, Mrs. Woods, you have quite a few schools in your district that I opened up. So 17...
Well, I have six. I have School 6 and I have School 99, but I'm concerned about that particular school. I'm using it quite often.
Listen, I really love the open discussion. We're way over time. So I would like to just ask a couple of quick questions so that we can get through. One question I have a concern is about transportation. How is transportation being handled to go into the schools for, I guess, from pre-K all the way through 12th grade?
Pre-K 6, there's yellow bus service. And then I believe the 7 to 12 programs all have NFTA transportation.
Okay, thank you so much. Thanks so much. And I do really appreciate you guys for holding off to the end to present and allowing for the Family Justice Center and Dr. Everly to present because of time restraints. Last thing is, I would love to really pay attention to the MBK program and student voice throughout the summer and just listen to those voices because the students tell a lot and they have a great understanding of, you know, what's needed in their district and their schools. And we should also just take time to listen to the students throughout this. Now, through the summer program, are we receiving tablets or pads for our students for our social learning needs?
They will be keeping the devices that they currently use during the school year. Other students are having those collected back. But if you're enrolling in one of our summer programs, you'll be keeping your device until the end of the program.
Okay. And will libraries be accessible to students during this time period?
I'm going to let Tara answer that, but I believe so.
Yes, will be accessible. And then we also plan to use Myon, Wobber inside the classroom, the digital platform.
Okay, thank you, thank you, thank you. I know a lot of our programs are generating, having our kids read out of books now. They want kids to read from books. And that's been a way that things have been going across the country now. Always looking at, you know, a port where kids, I get stigmas in their eyes from looking at the tablets so long, you know, every single day and getting that doctor and saying, what about the fatigue?
Yeah. And Mr. Heard, we are having the Bookmobile. It's going to be visiting our pre-K through 6 sites. So we do have a date for all of our sites for the Bookmobile.
Oh, that's wonderful. That's wonderful. Thank you. And I also like to pay attention to the art program also. Are we looking at musical instruments in our art program with students this summer? Are we practicing that in any kind of way?
I thought I saw some end-of-program theatrical performances or something that Michelle Augusto was planning. Anybody have any, want to extend on that, Tara?
It depends. It depends on the program. At the high school level, some kids might be recovering a credit in music. At the elementary level, there is music as part of the enrichment component. Michelle's program is a performance, I believe, for Wobber's. So it's a little different for everything.
Yeah, different programs, different pre...
We can have some type of information sent to us about the music program. I've received a lot of messages about music and how it's going to be illustrated throughout the district and how we can get more kids at this time. We know we don't have a music program in the schools to be introduced to music or to musical instrument or something like that and how we can propel that initiative. So those are my questions and my thoughts. I know that you guys have been in a number of meetings over the last two months and getting ready for this and also working with the Say Yes program and their summer program. I'd just like to say thank you to the administrative staff members that so diligently put this together under Cash's leadership and actually to have the insight to look at all these different programs and apply these programs and actually make them work and make them happen. So I am grateful for that. And I'm sure the city of Buffalo is going to commend you guys for the work that you're doing. I don't think that nobody, other schools here can push the type of education that we're pushing right now. Thank you.
Thank you. We appreciate it.
That concludes the Educational Support Committee meeting. I think we're about an hour and a half over. But I'd like to turn it right now over to Kathy Evans-Brown.
Thank you, Port Member Heard. So under the Student Achievement component this evening, our focus is special education. And we also have a representative from CPAC. Lisa Watson will follow the special ed presentation. Dr. Cash?
Yes, thank you. I want to release Tara. I know she's done a great job, but she doesn't have to stay on. So enjoy the evening, Tara, and thank you so much again. Thank you for your hard work.
Thank you.
Okay. Colleagues, tonight, we have an important topic, as always, to talk about. Whenever we talk about our special education program, I've always sort of thought that the term was outdated. I think that all of our programs should be about special education. Every child is special. But having said that, we are moving toward a... Becoming a diverse equity, diversity, equity, and inclusion, a DEI district, DEI district. And so the mindset around students with disabilities in special education needs to continue to be advanced and be progressive, state-of-the-art language, languaging, and then, of course, programming. Now, to that end, we know that we always have work to do. There's always more improvement to make. Improvement is a way of life in education. But we have some really excellent people in this area of special education. And so Kim Holzer, in her inimitable way, is going to only present a few slides with a few words on them, but she will have a trove of information to share. So she's going to be voicing over a lot of these slides. And then, of course, when board members have questions or comments, she'll be able to take those and go into great depth. But we just didn't want to put everything that she could share with you all into slides. So as is our custom now, we have about five or six slides. We'll go through those, and then we will open up for questions. We'll go through those and then we will open up for questions. But we also have a young lady, Dr. Kathy Evans-Brown, who I believe you asked to come and share with us, who is the, I believe she's the chairwoman of the CPAC. And so we're glad to have her with us this evening. Um, and, and so you may wanna make a decision uh for her about the order in which you'd like us to present. We're fine if you'd like to have a CPAC presentation first, uh, and then we can come with a, with our special education program as a courtesy to our guests. Your call.
Uh, Dr. Rivera, what do you think? She and, Dr. Rivera and I put this together. I think, um, this was my opinion, I think the district should go first, Kim, um, followed by CPAC because that's the off, I guess, the offspring, so to speak, of um, parent uh committee. What do you think? The parent is-
Oh, parents, parents, okay. Dr. Rivera, what are your thoughts?
As long as, I would like to consult with Ms. Watson. I wanna be respectful of her time, I'm fine with that, as long as she has time to stay with us through the presentation. I would ask, though, if we could have, if we choose to do that, if Ms. Watson is fine with that, we have the district presentation and then she follows up right after and we'll take questions afterwards. Ms. Watson, would that work?
See, my thoughts, if you, if I could, my thoughts are that Ms. Watson go first, give her presentation and then Ms. Holzer can, in her presentation, uh, maybe address or amplify or, or build upon or, um, you know, lift up, as uh some of you say, Ms. Watson's uh work. So I would, I would like to see Ms. Watson first and then the district.
Ms. Watson, are you prepared?
I am prepared.
Okay. So you have the floor.
Thank you.
Not sure we can hear you.
Yeah, you're breaking up for some reason.
All right, is that better?
That's better.
Okay. So we just have two uh brief points that we wanted to share just in terms of the perspective of, of parents and how it fits into special education. Uh, we do work hand in hand with um Kim Holzer, that whole team. And um, we um just wanted to give our thoughts within these two brief points. One being um the need to build trust for families, for sped families. And then the second being um open communication. So I'll just start off by uh saying that, you know, the need to build trust for our families is um paramount. Uh, one of the um, one of the concerns that parents do have is that um because um of the sensitive nature of the information that is shared um within a group setting, because of the communication that happens between parents and uh school staff and so forth, we're looking for um a level of sensitivity that's not necessarily um, doesn't necessarily have to be present with um, you know, other students, with general education students. So our circumstances involve sensitive information, um, sometimes embarrassing circumstances uh because of the behaviors of our children and so forth. And um, information has to be shared with the school that's not even shared with some of our own other family members. And so because of that, we just need uh the, the district as a whole to understand that this is an emotional process for us. And, and while we know that we're in school to learn, um, that is the, the primary reason that we're there, but um parents need assurances that, that their children are being taught as well as cared for with regard to their personal needs, not just the, the needs and consideration of policies and procedures and so forth. But we're just um adamant about the need to build trust and relationships with the entire team. Um, it's important that everyone involved, everyone who has contact with our children are aware that our needs are indeed, um, just as described, that they're special. And this means everyone, from the bus aides to the custodians, to the teachers, everyone that's involved. So um, any, any, uh, anything that can be done, I should say, to um make sure that uh training for understanding the needs of our children on an individual basis is very important to us. And um, we just need to make sure that there's, that there is no um breakdown in communication, that there is um, no disconnect with um what goes on in our families on a very personal level. And it's important that uh, that the schools understand that for our students, it's not always academics first. And because of the emotional needs, um, we just would like that to be recognized. And then secondly, in terms of communication, I'll just say that um CPAC members have expressed that we are um satisfied, for the most part, in, in the fact that communication has improved. Um, we feel that there have been some improvements with regard to the way uh we've received information. Um, we especially noticed that the um code of conduct was um updated. Um, some of our members expressing a Facebook Live uh session where that was covered and those types of things are obviously appreciated and we'd like to see more of that. But ideally, um, because we are in a virtual world, we feel like we need more um virtual updates. We need them to be more timely, um, we need them to be uh more clear. Uh, we need more clarity on what each school offers. If we can go to the website of a school and see the changes that have been made so that we can make better informed decisions for our children, uh particularly make decisions so that our children are in a best-fit situation, that we're not just um being placed in a school that might not work for one child's needs over another. Uh, I know that um, from, from what we understand, you know, a, a school might have a six-one-one or eight-one-one program one year and not have that same program another year. So if that information can be um disseminated to us in a way where we can make an informed decision, understand uh that process, how it works, understand what um teachers are going to be involved with caring for our children, their background. Because again, this is all about building trust and building relationships. And so we feel that we need um a strong relationship. And that means being able to um trust each other, to be able to partner uh with the school and with the teams and, you know, every, every person that's on that team. So um, parents need to stay informed. Um, we um definitely want to be able to um have a strong and open communication with everyone that's on the team. Um, timely updates for um these websites would be paramount for us with more defined information about who's involved and um just ultimately the understanding that um because we have sensitive information and needs that are considered special, we would appreciate just being able to build those relationships um in, in a more positive way and of course, in connection um with the school, with the board, um, with everyone that is involved. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Watson.
Yeah, that was excellent, very well articulated and uh we greatly appreciate that. We greatly appreciate that. Ms., Dr. Evans-Brown, um, would you like us to, to segue into that, I think, and then have a good discussion at the end? I think that'll work well.
I agree.
Okay. So again, thank you, uh, Ms. Watson, those, those are very uh excellent um aims or goals to, to, to improve upon. All right, so Kim, with Ann, you supporting, uh, certainly you heard those and you can build them into uh the presentation that I know you've already developed. And I think that can be a, a helpful discussion afterward. Kim?
Great, thanks, Dr. Cash, and thank you, Lisa. I appreciate all of those, that feedback and um, good evening to all the board members and to everyone on the call tonight. Um, I appreciate the opportunity to be here presenting with you and discussing, discussing special ed, which is my passion, so I'm very excited to be here with you. Um, if we could have the special ed presentation up, Ed Mayor?
And board members, we did send these slides to you, to your personal email, so you should have those as well.
Thank you. So um, obviously, tonight is our presentation on special education. Next slide, please. I don't know if I'm able to change the slides at all, I don't think I am.
Kim, the idea here is that special education uh is across the board. It, it relates to all of our work, so we didn't put a circle around any one uh button here. Uh, we see it as part of all of our um high-level strategies here that you see here.
Thank you, definitely. We wanna make sure our work is aligned to all of this. My, my screen didn't change at first for some reason, so I apologize for that. Um, yes, we wanna make sure all of our work is aligned to all of this. Next slide, please. So um, we have highlighted many areas that align with um the Student Success Plan in our work. Certainly enhancing programming for special education students is paramount for us. But so are things like um developing and supporting the delivery of instruction and programming that meets the needs of all students because our work does really affect gen ed students as well as special ed students because we do have the desire to, to get students and meet their needs where they're at so that we can um provide interventions and actually have less referrals to special education because we're meeting the needs of students in general education settings. Next slide, please. So tonight, I thought what I would do as I'm discussing the regulations that drive special education is really talk about the CSE process through the eyes of a parent. I know that CPAC is here tonight and that there may be parents who are watching, so I thought it would be helpful if we use that lens to present. Um, and to one of Lisa's points, one of the things I'm very excited about is I know that parents do need um to hear from us a little bit more and um, we just like more opportunities to see what is going on in schools and with the special ed process. So to that end, we are developing a video library that will be available to parents. It will probably take us, you know, through the course of this upcoming school year as well as into the next to get it all done. But we are looking at having short videos about the CSE process and all the situations that are really unique to special ed. So those short video clips can be watched by parents at any time, as well as staff members at any time. Um, I had brought this up to our reopening committee yesterday and they're also helping with providing some suggestions of what some of those topics may be and who may be some presenters. We may have students present some of these videos, parents, um principals, so we can lend a lot of perspective to this. So I'm gonna talk a little bit about the regulations and what the process is if a student um is referred to special ed. So the initial eligibility for a student is when um a parent or a special ed administrator makes a referral to special education. Those are the only people in our district who are allowed to make that direct referral, is a parent or a special ed administrator. Anyone else, a teacher, a school, um, sometimes we get doctors who write letters, can make a request for that referral. When a referral is requested, the school is required to submit a student intervention record or what we call a SERP packet to the CSE. And that gives the CSE or the Committee on Special Education the opportunity to consider all the response to intervention data to determine if this referral to special education really meets the criteria for a referral. A referral to special ed, according to the regulations, has to state the reasons for the referral, including test results, records, reports, any data based upon which the referral is made. It has to describe in writing the interventions and programs or instructional methodologies used to remediate student performance prior to that referral ever happening. It must also discuss the extent of parental contact or involvement prior to referral. So if we get a request for a referral, we make sure that all of those things are in place before we actually move it on to a referral. If a parent makes a referral, the process is very similar, but it is already considered a referral and the process begins. However, we still require the school to fill out that same SERP packet so that we have intervention um data on all tiered interventions as for academics as well as behavior so that we can determine if there was a behavior support plan in place if needed and that um we have a minimum of six to eight weeks of data to go on. So we look at background information, academic progress information, and we um consider all of that and use that data as part of our CSE referral and meeting. When the referral is made and we initiate the process, we have ten school days from that receipt of referral to actually call the parent and discuss the availability of interventions that we may wanna put in place in gen ed first. So we don't necessarily uh move every referral on directly to the committee before we have that conversation because many times, um, there are things we can do in gen ed first to meet the needs of the students that we may not have tried yet. Parents oftentimes have wonderful input into what might work for their student. We wanna consider all of that before we move on to the referral. At that point, after that conversation with the parent, if the parent wants to go on with the referral, we do that. If not, we withdraw that referral, letting the parent know that we certainly can come back to the table and refer that child at any time in the future. If the referral is not withdrawn, the CSE chair collaborates with the student support team and they, and the staff in the school, the students, teacher, to determine what is going to be done with that evaluation, uh, what types of evaluations will be done. Do we need to do an evaluation for speech or related services? Do we need a counseling evaluation? That is, all that information is provided in a PWN or a prior written notice that informs the parent of all the actions that the district is gonna propose to take. We always have to do a physical exam as part of an initial evaluation, a psychological eval, except in some cases, it may be determined that that's unnecessary. We have to do a social history, observe the student and the student's learning environment, and then any other appropriate assessments such as a related service evaluation. We have a timeline that we have to follow to accomplish this. It must be completed within sixty calendar days from the date that the parent consents to these evaluations. There's a delineation in a lot of the regulations for special education between calendar days and school days. So in this case, we have sixty calendar days from the date we receive consent from the parent to complete those evaluations. We then have sixty school days from that same date of receipt of consent to hold that meeting and to arrange for services for the child. When we look at eligibility for special education, we will not find a student eligible for services if the main factor um with the student's challenges are a lack of appropriate instruction in reading, a lack of appropriate instruction in math, or that they're limited English proficient. If those factors enter in, we cannot find a student eligible. We would need to remediate in gen ed, making sure they have the appropriate instruction that they need. So that's kind of in a nutshell what happens with the initial referral process. Um, there's certainly a lot more um forms and different pieces that go with that, but that kind of encapsulates for you, encapsulates for you what happens. We also have annual reviews. The CSE must meet annually to review and to revise that IEP. And that has to be held within one year of the previous meeting. At times, we've held the annual review, but amendments- At times, we've held the annual review, but amendments need to be made to a document. That was when we would hold an amendment meeting, and that simply changes something, it could be something as simple as a student was receiving services in ELA for 60 minutes and we are changing that to 90 minutes or to 30 minutes. So it's small things that need to change in that document without going into a full-blown meeting. And finally, we have reevaluations. The student must be reevaluated at least every three years according to the regs, and at that time, updated testing is completed as necessary. That reevaluation requires parental consent, but unlike an initial referral where we have to have a signed consent from the parent, we can document attempts to get that consent from a parent, and if the parent doesn't respond after several documented attempts, usually three, we can move ahead with that reevaluation. We also have to complete a reevaluation prior to declassifying a student. And then we hold a meeting because those results must be discussed at a reevaluation meeting. The continuum of services offered in the district, and I have to say we offer everything that is on that continuum. I know in some of our surrounding districts that are smaller, they are not able to offer what Buffalo is able to offer, but we offer everything that is on the continuum. And we base our student groupings on similarity of need. So we look at what is the least restrictive environment for that child? Is it consultant teacher, where we provide indirect or direct services to students with disabilities who are in a regular ed classroom? It may be related services, where we know that a student has speech needs or OT or PT needs, counseling needs, and we provide those. Some students require resource room. Resource room services have to supplement what is happening in regular or special education classrooms. It cannot supplant that, it has to be in addition to. We offer integrated co-teaching, which is the only thing on the continuum of services that is not required of a district, but is strongly encouraged that a district offers. We do firmly believe in integrated co-teaching, we want students to remain in that gen ed environment whenever possible. The difference between integrated co-teaching and consultant teacher services is that with integrated co-teaching, it's actually a group of students working together with that special ed teacher and the gen ed teacher, who are students with disabilities as well as students who are their non-disabled peers. So with consultant teacher, the group is only special ed. With integrated co-teaching, it's a mix of students with disabilities and their non-disabled peers. And then we move on to special class. And here, the composition of the class is based on similarity of need. We look at their academic and educational achievement, their learning characteristics, social development, physical development, and their management needs. We have 15 to 1 classes where the students have academic needs where they need specialized instruction that can't be met in the gen ed environment. 12 and 1 classes where their management needs, both academic and behavioral, interfere with the instructional process. 8 1 1 classes where those management needs are more intensive, so require a more significant degree of individualized attention and intervention than we can provide in other classes. A 6 1 1 class where management needs are highly intensive, requiring a high degree of individualized attention. And then we have our 12 to 1 plus 3 to 1 classes. Those are the classes you see at School 84, where these students have severe multiple disabilities, one of those being an intellectual disability. There we have the teacher in the room, and for every three students in that classroom, we have another aide. And we have our 12 1 2 classes for our medically fragile students. Next slide please. So in the Division of Special Education, we have two arms, so to speak, the CSE and program. Our CSE arm has several different committees. We have our school-based committee. There are currently 6,523 students with disabilities in the district. We have 45 chairs who are grouped into teams and then assigned to schools to complete all of the CSE actions for those schools. As part of that team, we also have five bilingual psychologists, two bilingual social workers, two speech coordinators, nine speech evaluators, a related service coordinator, physical therapists, occupational therapists, all of whom are able to complete evaluations. During that process, our chairs talk with parents, the evaluators talk with parents, all of the different evaluators, the psychologists, the social workers, to speak to Lisa's point that we really want to make sure we are addressing family needs and considering with compassion all of the issues that a student may have and how emotional this may be for the parent and the family. So we want to make sure that we're always addressing that in this process, and the team really works hard to get parental input and to have those conversations with parents. I support you 100% Lisa in that fact that communication is so important in this process. We also have our agency team. We currently have 774 students in agency settings, so we have a team of three chairs and two psychologists who have all the placement responsibilities and CSE action responsibilities for these students. We're responsible for non-district students in agencies as well if they attend a residential facility. So we have three residential facilities that are located in our district, Baker, Gateway, and Connors. So even if a student is from a surrounding district but is placed in one of those residential facilities, we are responsible for the CSE actions of those students, so we service them as well. Our district committee has two chairs and one psychologist and one speech therapist. The role of this committee is to work closely with our legal department and parents to resolve any issues that parents have with our process. We typically average about 15 to 20 due process cases a year. Very few of our cases go to hearings. In the past four years, we have only had one case that has gone to a hearing. All of the others, we are able to resolve through resolution sessions, just having CSE meetings and discussions with the parent. Again, the key to this part of our success with solving these cases is communication. We talk with teachers, we talk with the schools, with outside agencies, advocates, and certainly parents and students are the most important people in this process that we talk to. So that we're able to resolve any complaints that the parent has, any appeals that the parents have after a CSE meeting. So we want to make sure that parents have that opportunity to have their voice heard and that we can solve any issues they may have. If a parent wants to request an appeal after a meeting, they have 30 days after the CSE meeting to request that appeal, but it has to happen before the child accesses the recommended program. That's for the regulatory piece. The other piece of that is if a parent has issues and they miss those regulatory deadlines, we still have an open line of communication and want to work with parents to address any concerns that they have, so that we can meet their needs as well as the needs of their child. Our charter non-pub office services the 1,094 students with disabilities in charter schools as well as the 211 students who have disabilities who are in our non-pubs. So we have six chairs and three psychologists and two social workers in this department that handle all of the CSE responsibilities there. We currently have 1,034 preschoolers with a disability. Unlike school-age special education services where there are 13 different classification categories, there is only one for preschoolers. All preschoolers who need special education services are classified as preschoolers with a disability. This program's a little bit different because the county is responsible for running the programs, but it is the district who has CSE responsibility. We have seven chairs, a psychologist, a social worker, who support all of these CSE responsibilities. So each student who receives these services has to also have a meeting before their third birthday, if they're in early intervening services, so that we can refer them to the three and four-year-old program. So we hold all of those meetings as well. Placement, we have three coordinators there. And part of the responsibility of placement is to place students when they have a change in programming, be it integrated co-teaching or special class, or if a parent requests a transfer and is approved for that transfer into a different special class in a different school. So there again, when a student is offered a placement, we try to give the parents as many choices as possible. Our placement coordinators work hard and diligently to reach those parents, so that they can tell the parent what schools a particular program is offered in. Only if we cannot reach the parent do we make a decision of where we're going to place without parental input. In that case, we would then place the student in the school closest to the home where the student's needs can best be met, but we do work diligently to make sure that we're communicating with parents and offer them choices whenever possible. We also have some other services as part of the CSE division. There is a coordinator of parent services, Vanessa Guerra, who takes parent concerns and works with them, works with advocates, addresses any of the needs she can with parents, will talk to me on a regular basis and bring any concerns. Oftentimes, I will get involved in talking to the parents because we want to make sure we are reaching all the needs. We have a coordinator in our department that addresses 504 needs. We have a research aide because we know that data is so important in meeting the needs of the students. And we also have two psychologists and a chair who run our manifestation determination team, which is the committee that handles suspensions for students with disabilities. Next slide please. The program division of special education focuses a lot on specially designed instruction, which is really what the whole special education department is about, providing instruction for students that meets their unique set of learning concerns, their unique learning needs. It's really the unique set of supports provided to a student to make sure we are meeting and addressing all of their disability needs. Excuse me. So we want to make sure we're removing any barriers that may result from a student's disabilities. So it sounds very much like differentiated instruction, and it's very similar. The difference between this and differentiated instruction is that we are targeting individual students and making sure we are addressing every one of their individual needs. Our program division focuses a lot of time and energy on professional development. NEPD that we've offered in person in the past actually was converted to asynchronous training and NEARPOD this year, so that we could continue all of those trainings. We did training on concurrent instructional strategies in a co-teaching classroom. One of the trainings we developed was for all of our teachers on supporting skills development, again, putting some of our focus on pre-referral intervention, so that we can meet the needs of our students before they are put in a special ed environment. We have training on SDI, specially designed instruction, which I just spoke about, on behavioral strategies, because we know a lot of our students have behavioral needs, on the implementation of behavior support plans, high leverage practices in special ed, secondary transition services, diploma credentials. So we offer these trainings on these topics that are so important for teachers to understand so that we can meet the needs of our students. We also have two special education coaches who support any teachers who need behavior with, assistance with behavior or academics. This year, they did a lot of that support virtually, certainly, but we also have, in the past and will continue to and have started again, going into classrooms to make sure we are actually in that room with embedded coaching in the classroom to make sure the students have, or the staff has the support they need to meet the students' needs. We are looking to hire two behavioral specialists in the department as well, because we know that there are significant needs and will be more significant needs with our students returning from a very, very challenging year. So we want to make sure we're addressing that by hiring two behavioral specialists who can go into classrooms, special classrooms, where some of our behavior, or our focus is behavior, and assist those teachers in meeting the needs. And also again, before a student is referred to special ed, if there's behavioral concerns, working with the teacher so we can address those behavioral concerns pre-referral. We also have an autism task force, which is a group of people that is made up of administrators, teachers, parents, and outside organizations to discuss any concerns and issues around servicing our students with autism. We brainstorm ways on that committee to improve the delivery of instruction for students with autism. We develop PD, and we're always looking at ways we can improve the program. That is probably the area where we are growing the fastest, is in our need for classes for students with autism. We also have a transition committee. We have quarterly meetings with this committee that we talk about all of the pieces of the IEP and the program that relate to transition for students with disabilities, to ensure that students are accessing all of our differentiated CTE programs. We have wonderful programs for our students in our 15 to 1 and 12 1 1 classes, and are working to offer those supports to our students in 6 1 1 and 8 1 1s in the next couple of years. We also realized that there was a need to make sure that our students that we place in agencies are graduating. The agencies do not always have the same requirements, or do not always consider the same classes as valuable classes, I guess you could say, for our students with disabilities that are housed there. So we worked in conjunction with our guidance department to, early on in the placement in an agency of our ninth grade through 12th grade students, having them send the transcripts, and the guidance department works with the special education department to review all of the transcripts and credits of students in agencies to make sure they're on track to graduate, and the classes that the agencies are providing are actually meeting their needs to earn credits. By doing that, we have greatly increased the number of students who are eligible for a diploma in an agency setting. And finally, staffing. We have one, Katie Wilbert, who is in charge of our, I'm sorry, I'm going to step away one second, I just have to plug in my computer, my apologies. Okay, I'm sorry about that. Who works diligently to make sure that we have certified teachers in every special education classroom in ICT positions, which is no small task. She works night and day to make sure that our classes are well-staffed and works with HR closely to make sure we have paraprofessionals in place as well. Next slide please. So over the course of COVID, we wanted to make sure we were still responding to the needs of our special ed students and still providing a free, appropriate public education. So to that end, we developed distance learning plans, which were plans that we had teachers create to make sure that they were delivering specially designed instruction to students during the remote environment. We provided a short asynchronous PD for teachers, developed a checklist that included frequently asked questions, and gave them forms with step-by-step directions so they would know how to create these distance learning plans, as well as upload them into a child's folder. To that end, we were able to track during all of closure, the distance learning plans of every teacher and to make sure that specially designed instruction was delivered for our students with disabilities. We also had our psychologists and social workers create these distance learning plans or DLPs to ensure that services were provided social emotionally as well. We made sure they were doing counseling, that they still did check and connect, which is one of our tier-two supports. They checked in with students, made sure that they were okay, they did wellness checks. They still had some small They still had some small group interventions with students who may have had some emotional concerns. We also documented on that form anything that they did for IEP meetings, evaluations they did, social histories, and we documented all of our parental contact as well. We were also able to provide virtual therapy for our students during remote learning. I do have, if you had to share with you on that as well, over the course of this year, even though we were remote for a large part of it, we still delivered 120 speech sessions, I'm sorry, 120,000 speech sessions, over 55,000 sessions of OT, and almost 15,000 sessions of PT. So our virtual therapy really did continue throughout this whole process. We developed reopening protocols to help schools with any concerns they had, bringing students back or during remote learning. This was also shared with parents at a CPAC meeting, and we did have on our website reopening protocols for parents as well. Our reopening subcommittee met many times, 18 times to be exact, over the course of closure. And we discussed things such as the reopening protocols, in-person related services, remote meetings, CSE meetings, and the virtual library, which I referenced earlier. We were able to still provide assistive technology to our students as per their IEP. That assistive technology was actually things we delivered to the home or in some cases, alternatives to that. So for example, if a student had a calculator on their IEP as part of their assistive technology, we were able to show them how to access a calculator on their computer. We provided social emotional support. I referenced most of that just a minute ago when I talked about the DLPs for psychologists and social workers. But they did call families, they had office hours, they provided counseling. In many cases, they pushed into some of our encore classes to do social emotional groups. They delivered food and supplies. So we really put a heightened awareness and sensitivity around meeting the social emotional needs of our students and families. And finally, we held virtual CSE meetings. All of our ARs in our reevals that we did not need to do evaluations for were held in compliance throughout the whole process. For our initial referrals, we were able to speak with parents. And in almost every case, we were able to extend the timelines for these evaluations to take place so that we could do them as soon as we returned to in-person. We also developed and have used a collaboration portal where we were able to send all meeting notices, IEP consents, any documents that we needed to get to parents through this collaboration portal. Parents were able to sign documents and return them and another way that we were able to communicate with our families. And the next slide, please. So we have several new initiatives going on in our division. The first one that I am so excited about is our Student Voice Initiative. In the fall, we held meetings with our eighth grade, 15 to 1 and 1211 students, virtual meetings. And we discussed with them all of the options that were available to them in high schools for differentiated CTE. So programs like automotive or theater maintenance, all of the different programs that we have at our high schools. After those meetings, those students really shared with us that they felt much more prepared to make decisions about high school. And through that procedure, we were also able to get more students in their first choice high schools because they were really more aware of where they wanted to go and what programs were available to them. We then, in the winter months, held those meetings with seventh graders so that they can anticipate a year ahead of time what will be available to them in high school. We're going to continue these meetings next year. We will be increasing the program options for students so we will be able to increase that in our 811 and preschool classes as well. We're going to increase student voice, and this is something I'm just thrilled about, by eventually having student-led IEP meetings. But how we're going to start that is with schools piloting a program where we use a form of questions that our students will have to fill out, elementary and high school, about their strengths, where they see as their areas that they need more help, what really works for them in schools, what are their interests, how do they learn best? Just a bunch of questions that really relate to that individual student. And they will be asked then to present that information at their IEP meeting. We were looking to open that up to two schools next year to pilot in. But actually, once we presented it to schools, we had 20 schools who wanted to start piloting that immediately. So that will begin in 20 schools in the fall, and the following year will be implemented in the rest of our schools. At that point, we'll take the original 20 schools and we'll get more in-depth student-led IEP meetings. We have opened preschool special classes in our district over the course of the past couple of years, adding several more last year during closure, which at the start of the year was okay, but it was a little bit more challenging once COVID hit and families weren't necessarily wanting the remote learning in preschool. But we are getting them filled now. Parents are very excited about the fact that they don't have to send their students out of district to get special classes. So we have opened classes at School 32, School 54, 61, and 99. So at 54, those classes are special class environments where we have students with significant behaviors. At 32, they're preschool classes for students with autism. At 61, it is for students with more global delays. And then at 99, we have integrated classrooms that are very comparable to our school-age ICT settings. And there, we have students with more mild delays and mild behaviors integrated in with their non-disabled peers. We are starting an eye-to-eye mentoring program, piloting this between McKinley High School and School 79. This is another really exciting program. It is targeted for our students with learning disabilities. The students at McKinley will work with our students at School 79 in a project-based program. It's 18 weeks in length. And while they're doing these projects, they'll be discussing and having really meaningful conversation around self-advocacy and self-confidence and how their disability could actually be seen as a strength. So we're going to create through this program a greater sense of positive identity for our students with a learning disability. And hopefully, then we'll be able to put that in additional schools in the following year. And finally, we are looking at implementing Orton-Gillingham, a structured reading program. We are going to identify staff who would be trained in that. We recognize that there is a strong need to provide a structured literacy program for our students who have dyslexia and other learning disabilities. So we are going to bring Orton-Gillingham to the district to meet that need. Again, as several of the things I talked about earlier, we will also be using that with students pre-referral so that we make, put those interventions in place before we need to make that referral to special education. So those are some of the initiatives. I could go on forever about the exciting things we're doing and about regulations and placement knows. But I'll stop there and see if there is any question and answers, and provide some answers for any questions you may have.
I told you.
Yeah, that was robust. Thank you, Cam. That was such an extensive, robust presentation. I was overwhelmed with the information that you provided. So it just goes to show that Buffalo is truly a public educational institution. Would you say that roughly 20% of our students in Buffalo schools are in special ed?
That's about right. It's a little higher if you consider a speech and language disorder as one of what you're counting. We don't always count that. So it's probably about 20% without speech impaired and a little higher if you include speech impaired.
Okay, thank you so much. And answer this for me. Pre-K. Did I hear you say at 1,000, there's 1,034 pre-K students with special needs? I was under the impression...
They're not all serviced by the district, but as far as in our schools, they're serviced in... Some get itinerant services in the home, some are in agency settings, some are in Head Start, some are in our BPS. But that's the number of students that we have CSE responsibility for.
Okay. All right, so I have, I see some other hands here. Terrence, I saw his hand go up first. Terrence?
Yes, thank you, Dr. Katia Miss Brown. First, I'd like to say, great presentation, Ms. Watson. You have some great momentum with CPAC and really listened to your words that you said and things you seem that need to be improved on. So thank you for that. And, you know, I love just working with groups that's working with our families and our children. So thank you again. Ms. Hostetler, a great presentation. I know you said you're not finished yet, so I just want to ask a couple of questions quickly. Is there any way we can address the issue about kids that come to the Buffalo Public Schools that have behavioral issues that's sent over from charter schools? Is there like a fast track or something that can be developed that we can target those children that be removed from charter schools so they can maybe be tested for IEP or work with the parents to get consent to be tested? Or possibly, or just possibly put them in a building or a program until they can get tested and then move into a different school? Because I get so many complaints from teachers, administrative staff members, that these children come into the classroom and disrupt their classrooms. You know, they, when teachers, you know, students get to not understand their teachers in their classroom, and someone comes in from the outside, we can totally disruptive and disrupt that learning environment. How can we address that? Or is there some way we can identify those children?
Sure. So there's a couple pieces to that answer. So first, we have noticed somewhat of a trend where some of our students in a special class environment in Buffalo will move to a charter school where they don't have special class environments. And so their IEPs are then changed to reflect the placement that the parent has chosen for their child and to reflect the supports that can be put in place in that charter school. But what does happen is that then the students come back because the charter schools can't really meet their needs. So if that happens within the same school year, so we are then able to move that student back into the special class that they weren't in Buffalo. So let's say they start the year in Buffalo in an 811 because of behavioral concerns, and the parent moves them to a charter. And two months later, they come back from that charter school, and now their IEP reads ICT. We can immediately convert that IEP back to the 811 setting that they were in in Buffalo. So if a parent, you know, is moving in and out of Buffalo in between the charter and Buffalo, we have that avenue. But as far as when they come in with behaviors from a charter, we do ask that our psychologists and social workers work with the students and put a behavior support plan in place first. So that is very similar to the behavior plan that we have for our students with disabilities, but it's a plan for our gen ed students because we really do want to work diligently to meet the needs of the student in the gen ed environment and try to put interventions in place before they're referred to special ed so that student can stay in the gen ed environment, access the gen ed curriculum, and get their behavior issues met while still in gen ed before a special ed referral. So before we would just move to that special ed referral, we are going to put interventions in place.
I was saying that because I would like to see maybe a school that kids can be transferred to until they can be evaluated to be placed in a general education setting without disrupting that classroom or bringing havoc to that teacher or teacher is actually have to lay back because trying to catch that kid up with the work that that class is on track for. So is there any way that's possible, Dr. Cash? Or any way we can look into maybe a placement setting for kids that transferred back into the Buffalo Public School and then place them into a program?
Can we take the slides down, please? That's better.
Yeah, I'm not sure that's an educationally sound idea. I mean, I think it's got a good spirit. I think that your intention is good. I'm not sure I'm going to transition into sort of a, like a step-down thing, over to and back. I think we've got to try to keep kids into an inclusive environment as much as possible would be my thoughts about it. I understand what you're saying. But I do think that I don't want to segregate kids and make that a practice unwittingly. Then you, and then I've seen it becomes more and more a career. And then you get whole schools developing like that. I've seen that in Oakland, for example, where they're upside down with special education. And it's because of accret, they've accreted what was thought to be a helpful practice to the regular or gen ed population and teachers, but they over-accreted what turned out to be bad educational practices. And it now is really, really upside down. So I hear you. Cam, what are your thoughts on that?
Yeah, so I do agree that they should, we certainly need to meet their needs. But I do feel like we should be putting them in a school and meeting their needs there in a regular, in the regular way that any student would come in. You know, we place them somewhere and then we put the supports in place that they need rather than segregate them. I think integration is really what we're looking for. We want to be as inclusive as possible. We want to provide that equity. And I think really the only way to do it is to, when the kids come back, we meet them where they're at.
Thank you. I would say that because of over 700 kids being transferred back into the Buffalo Public Schools this year, or even children who maybe come from out of state. You don't know where they at. And I just get so many complaints from teachers that it's hard to... And the time it takes to get an IEP evaluation is, seems to be like a little longer than they expected or get a child evaluated. The process takes a little longer. And I just really want to look at the school to prison pipeline and not having that child suspended or being out of suspension for that time period.
Yeah, I think that that's a different question. And I think that can be addressed and looked at. But, you know, that's, that's the challenge of this revolving door sometimes with the charters. So we should have a workshop maybe just devoted to that and come up with some strategies and thoughts about it, even working collaboratively with charter schools around this. Maybe charter schools need more resources to deal with the multiple mixed population, you know? It's a very different, very different set of statistics for most charter schools here in the district than the Buffalo Public Schools. We're equipped, we are experienced, and have staffing to address the complex needs. We even have schools from outside the district that send children to our programs. And we welcome that, and we have great programs for that. But the design is always on inclusion and on growing students from where they are and getting them integrated quickly into, into a, you know, population, full population of students. So that's our goal. But the other issue, you know, that's another discussion, another time.
My last question is, parent counseling and training to understand, you know, the needs, what's going on with their child. Parents, you know, have, may have behavior issues, you know, lashing out to a child that they don't understand or understand that there may be a problem or an issue. The district working with those parents also to help identify the children and help identify their needs.
Sure, so we work really closely with... Sure. So we work really closely with Parent Network to make sure that, um, we, they get calls from parents sometimes who have concerns around their students' behavior. So we work really closely with them, um, to make sure we are providing training that they need. We're offering parent sessions on managing behavior at home. Um, we get calls as a department often around that. And we put as many supports as we can in places while we have our coaches talk to parents. We, um, we refer parents to whatever organizations we know may be of value to them. We talk about ways we can help address that students' needs in school. The social workers get involved and talk about wraparound services and supports that may be available. So we try to hit it from all avenues to support that family.
Yeah, Kim, to that point, uh, I heard Lisa say that was something that would be helpful to the parent of the CPAC. More training, more parent education and support around some of the issues that, uh, parents are, are going through. So I think that while you do it, let's just make a note that let's see if we can amplify or continue to build, uh, that aspect of our, of our work. I think it's very important. It's a good question.
Definitely.
That Terrence asked about that.
Definitely. I wrote it down.
Thank you, Dr. Kat Davis-Brown.
Okay, you're done? Uh, yeah, and you know, as we know, many of these kids are living in households other than their own. They're living with kinship families and grandparents who are now parenting young people and, and they have grown children. So that's another, uh, conversation as well. Uh, Dr. Rivera, you had your hand up. And then followed by, uh, Board Member Larry Scott.
Thank you very much. So I'd like to start with commending the movement that the Special Education Department is doing under Ms. Holsher and Ms. Botticelli towards self-advocacy for our students and our families and our caregivers. Uh, one of the things that's really, really critical that Dr. Cash referenced in the beginning is that if we are going to have equity, if we're going to be a diversity and equity instruction district, that includes students with disabilities. I feel very strongly about this, as you can probably tell. And I think that, um, working, the more that you can work with students to self-advocate for their needs, the better quality of schooling they will have and the better outcomes they will have. And both Student Voice and IEP and I to I are critical pieces of that. I think what Ms. Watson was talking about as well, and I want to thank her also for appearing and also expressing these, the issues and the, the perspective that parents have through this process. As you could probably hear from Ms. Holsher's presentation, special education tends to be very legally oriented. It's the nature of the process. It does not necessarily reflect the people who are involved in it. But one of the things that can happen with parents is they do need their voices to be heard. And in order to have that kind of equity, all of these initiatives need to start happening. And I, I just, I had a few questions along those lines. Particularly with, uh, how we might be able to increase student and caregiver familiarity with the options available to students with disabilities, especially as they move into middle school and high school. Because in the spirit of equity and the spirit of self-advocacy, having students be able to choose some of their own options that would fit their needs and their interests, just as their peers in general education would, I think that would make a critical difference. And it will also help with everything that was laid out after about behaviors, about supports that students need, and about some of the difficulty that, that families can find themselves in and the need for support. It has been shown over and over again that students with disabilities can be very successful with the right kinds of supports. And self-advocating for themselves about what those supports are rather than us on the outside saying, "Oh, you have X diagnosis or you have X behaviors. We're going to do this." I think that's a really critical piece of it. Is there, is there a way that we might be able to do that? High school previews, something similar for our students with disabilities?
So, yes, I couldn't agree with you more, which is why, um, we, we started the Student Voice Program, why we're looking for programs like I to I and the Mentoring Program. Um, I, I do think that the, the meetings helped a lot that we held this year, but it is not where we want to stop at all. Um, I think that actually even in the elementary buildings, when parents are offered a special class, we could look into some video snippets of this is what is available at this school or this is what an 8-1-1 really looks at. So that's one of the things we're hoping to create in that video library. And, and Dr. Rivera, I would love your input on that, um, as to some of the topics that you think are important. Because we really want to develop a comprehensive library for parents to access and say, "Oh, this is, this is exactly the topic I needed information on." And then update those frequently and make sure that part of what's included there is what is available to parents in the schools.
I'd like to, I'd be happy to be involved in that. I'm always happy to be a part of this. I'd also like to recommend though that perhaps we can do some parent-focused groups as well about what they want to see. My experience, I have a 22-year-old. My experience is a little old now. And so I'd like to see if we can capture some parent voices as well. I think that'd be really wonderful.
Thanks. Definitely.
I appreciate that. And then finally, just to comment about inclusivity. I'm really passionate about that. We want to make sure that we don't overly identify or too quickly identify students and we meet their needs. I really like the term "meeting students where they're at." And I think that's a big part of equiting. It's really, really critical. I hear the concerns that Mr. Hurd is expressing about behaviors. However, I think it's, it's, as Dr. Cash pointed out, it's a slippery slope to put students separately based on behaviors because, um, they're, they're challenging in some ways. We need our students to be together. And I think the more that we put them together, the better outcomes we're going to see, both for our special education and our general education students. Because they're all our students.
Absolutely. I couldn't agree more.
Thank you, uh, Dr. Rivera. Uh, Board Member Larry Scott, followed by President Kotman.
Thank you, Dr. Evans-Brown. I, I actually put my hand down because Dr. Cash and now Dr. Rivera, sort of, uh, answered or said what I was going to say. But I'll just add, putting my school psychologist hat on, I, I understand Mr. Hurd, the concern with behaviors, but the dilemma with charters is not the, the fault of those students that are coming to us. And we can't presume that they have a disability if they haven't already been identified and refer them to the committee, um, identify them and put them in a program. There's a process that needs to be followed, um, and it's required by the state regulations. So that's, that's all I wanted to add. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. President Kotman?
Thank you for your, uh, presentation. It was very informative. I just have a couple of questions. Is there a report that identifies which classes by demographic and type? That, uh, is, is there a report that exists that demonstrates by demographics as well as the type of services that are being provided for each school?
So when you say demographics, do you mean like the classroom type, the special class type?
Special class as well as who's in those classes? What children, what, 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 what subgroups are in those classes?
So we do have, we keep reports, um, actually of like a three-year progression. So we could see what was in the class, in the building last year, what's in it this year, what's going to be in it next year as far as special classes. Um, I could certainly run a report of the demographics of the students in each of those classes. I don't have that, um, on hand right now. The other report, you know, we keep updating every day basically. But, um, but we certainly could run a report like that.
Okay, so my reason for asking that question is, is when I look at the way the budgeting is currently being done, uh, there's no way for me as a board member to understand what, uh, what, if I'm looking at a school and it has 11 special ed classes, I don't know what those classes are, okay? When I look at a school that has five or whatever. And so when trying to figure out, um, as I, as I move forward with working equity a little bit more, I'm trying to figure out, I'm just curious to know, the placement of children in what, in, in what parts of town, what, what, what districts, what schools? I'm curious to know that, okay? And I think it's legitimate concern because since I've been here, um, I've seen, you know, classes move out of certain areas and move into other areas. And I'm, I'm just curious to know. Because if you are making decisions on placing or establishing classrooms and you have 11 special ed classrooms in one building, and then when I asked the question four years ago, "Why, um, are certain schools not being improved or increased with their special ed?" I was told because they didn't have the room. But then I watched you carve out space in certain schools. So I'm just curious to know, you know, how that is decided? How do you decide that you're going to take a classroom and put it in this school and provide this type of classroom and another? So I just would like to look at the report. I don't expect an answer on that.
Okay.
I really would like to look at the report because I would like to see what's going on with special ed as far as districts are concerned and as far as, as, as classrooms are concerned. I'm just curious to know that, okay?
Sure. I'll, I'll get that together for you.
Thank you. So I had asked a question a while back with, to, to Dr. Cash. I made the statement that, um, when new children are coming to our buildings who have never been, uh, part of the Buffalo Public School family, that according to the Commissioner's Regulation 117 dot 1, that they are supposed to be checked to see if they're gifted and talented. They're supposed to be checked to see if they have disability. They're supposed to be checked to see what level they are literate in their language and things like that. I was told, not by Dr. Cash, but by someone else, that this process could take as long as three years in our system. Is that true?
No. We screen, we have four district screeners who do a screening. They start with pre-K and kindergarten students. So in kindergarten, they don't rescreen if they were screened in pre-K. But they start with pre-K and K. Um, they are usually done with that. Uh, they start in September. They're typically done by December 1st to December 15th, screening all of the pre-K and K. And then, um, we also start, at that point, start new entrants in other grades. So it, it's a pretty quick process. We have four staff members who are designated to complete that.
And they do every student that comes into this district, new student?
They do new entrants-
From high schools?
They do the new, yes, for, for, um, monolingual. And I think Ann could speak to what happens with the bilingual students.
Um, students who come in potentially speaking another language go through a pretty rigorous process at central registration. Um, and I think we, we had shared some information about Part 117 and how the district implements that. But they do go through the Home Language Questionnaire. They have an interview. They have an orientation. They take the NISATEL. Um, there's a, there's a pretty rigorous process to identify a student who, uh, might be speaking another language and need those supports.
Okay, so the gifted and talented children, Ann, when are they checked? Because according to this, our children are supposed to be checked to see if they are.
Yes. So Kim's team is testing the students who speak English, um, as their language. They are looking for that through their testing. What we are moving toward, uh, next year is that we'll have a Spanish language version of that assessment and that we'll be working with translations for students who, uh, may be identified as speaking another language but need that further piece of testing.
Okay, so the gifted and talented piece, are children checked or does an application have to be requested by a parent to get that?
I think there's two different processes. So Kim's team would automatically test any student and determine whether they had the potential for giftedness. It doesn't mean that they are necessarily gifted. Um, and then a letter would go home to those families advising them of that. But then there's also the GT test that kids take through a different process at registration.
Okay, so every child in this district is being checked to see if they have GT, uh, potential?
Every new entrant is being checked. Right now, if they speak English and we're moving, next year, we'll have been able to test all bilingual students as well.
Okay, so every new child is being checked. Okay, so the GT process happens within the same nine-month period or what?
So, so the test Kim is referring to is usually completed by December. But if a student arrives after that, obviously we'd be testing them later. That, then there's a separate type of test if you're thinking of kids who might be trying to get into, um, specific schools like 64 or 156 or City Honors. That's separate from the work that Kim's team is doing.
Okay, all right. So, okay, all right, I understand that. Okay, so the only other question I have in regards to the, the special ed piece is that, um, have we moved, are we moving from six, uh, 8-1-1s, I mean, 6-1-1s to 8-1-1s as a district? Is, is there, is there a flow that's happening where we're eliminating 6-1-1s?
No, it's two different, um, we meet the needs differently in those classrooms. Our 8-1-1s are students who are, um, academically on benchmark except for the fact that their behavior interferes so much with their learning. In our 6-1-1 classes, it's for students who academically and behaviorally have more significant and highly intensive needs.
Okay, so as a district, we need to move children from 6-1-1 into 8-1-1?
Kim, was there some movement at the high school level?
Oh, at the high school level, um, it was for our NISA classes or for our students with alternate assessment. So as they get older, when they go to high school, those classes were changed from 6 to 8s. Those can be really serviced at any level of service. Some districts service their NISA students in 12-1-1s, some service them in 15-1s. So when we get to the high school level, we service our students who are NISA or New York State Alternative Assessment in 8-1-1s instead of 6-1-1s like they are in younger grades.
Oh, okay. Even though their behavior does not represent that they should be moved?
It's not moving them. It's just that we service more kids in the classroom when they're in high school. A lot of those students are going out to work experiences. Um, they're, they're going for their credentials. So they are, um, at different job sites and things. So there's rarely all of the students in the classroom at the same time. They're out in the community a lot. So we have eight kids in there. So when the kids who are behind, left behind on the day, other kids are in the work groups, they have more students in the classroom. It's a more authentic experience for the students. We're able to service them a little more effectively with eight students in the room. And these are, these are students with the alternative assessment.
And so do we provide the parents, parents with any resources during this transition? Because that, uh, was this, uh, because I, I've, I've taken several calls over, over the past year about this issue. I've talked to several principals about it, um, and they were able to resolve it. So, you know, I always typically try to send the parent back to the school. Start with the principal, okay? Don't start with me. And if the principal has a problem, then the principal can move it to the next level. And so what, what one of the parents said to me was, is that these changes were made with my child, but no one, uh, no one provided me with the information I needed or the support that I needed to move him to the next level. Do you understand? Like she didn't understand. She was fearful that because he was coming, going into an 8-1-1 from being in a 6-1-1, that he was not going to be able to cope and that she, and that she didn't know how to help him. And so I'm wondering if we're providing any resources for the parents when those transitions are happening, uh, following up with what, uh, Mrs. Watson was talking about earlier with the communication piece. And thank you, Mrs. Watson, for being on our phone, our, our meeting today and the work that you're doing in our district. We appreciate you.
So, um, when that occurred, the change was made from the 6-1-1 to 8-1-1, we called every parent. There may have been a couple of parents who we didn't reach, who were not available, but we called every parent and explained the process, explained why, um, that was occurring, talked to them about school choice. So we did reach out to every parent during that transition.
Right. Give them any paperwork, uh, Kim, is what I'm saying. Do you give them something that they could, they can hold as tangible to them, that they can read? Because, you know, a lot of times, things are, go over our heads, okay? You call me on a date where I'm dealing with 20 things and I'm, I'm just, okay, okay. And then now I really- And then now I realize it's, I smacked up against my face that I, I got a situation. I'm just trying to look for more supports for the parents.
Sure, yeah, I can look to put something like that in place. Nothing really changed about the classroom. The program itself did not change at all. It's simply the number of kids in the room. Everything else remained the same, the community experiences they have. So nothing about the program changed. It was just the number of students that we are servicing in those classrooms. And we also had to have CSE meetings to make those changes. So we did hold amendment meetings, and, you know, obviously, the parents were invited and attended those as well. And we sent home the updated IEPs. But, you know, I, I hear you that we have to, you know, hit this several ways. So we can look to, to increasing our support around that. Thank you.
Thank you for all the work that you've been doing over the years. I appreciate you as well. And you too, Ann, you're, Ann, I appreciate you too, Ann. Don't think I don't.
No, she does.
So I don't see any other hands. Any other hands, Ms.? Okay, so Dr. Cash?
I'd like board members to speak. But I do have something rather elephant in the room that I want to say before we conclude tonight.
Okay, so the last, I don't see any other board members, but Ms. Watson, do you have any last-minute observations that you would like to express after that robust presentation by Kim?
Agreed that it was a robust presentation. Just thank you for allowing me to speak on behalf of CPAC. We, we take the work seriously, you know, we're all volunteers, we're all parents. We're parents, and we're, a lot of us have children who have already gone through the Buffalo Public School system. So we're there to support the new parents. And we just appreciate, you know, the support and the partnerships that are available. We just want to keep the lines of communication open at all times. So thank you for having me tonight.
And thank you. Let me ask you a question. How do you get new parents involved in CPAC?
I'm sorry, I didn't.
How do you go about getting new recruits, new parents, involved in CPAC? Because I think it's critical that they know about you, number one, and number two, that it's available.
Yes, CPAC is, we're, we're actually on somewhat of a marketing campaign right now. So we, we need to get the word out. People are familiar with us through the, through the Department of Special Education, through Parent Network, who we partner with by word of mouth. We're on Facebook. So we're just trying to get the word out. It, it would be so helpful if, you know, team members in the schools would let people know that we exist. If, if flyers are up or any type of information, we have brochures that, you know, we would love for the schools or whoever is available to let parents know, because we are here to support each other. So if the teams could join us in any fashion on a marketing campaign, as we call it, to allow, you know, our membership to expand, that would be greatly appreciated.
Ms. Watson, that's a great idea. We can definitely distribute things at our meetings and at the school level.
Thank you.
Great. All right, Dr. Cash?
Yes, colleagues, again, great presentation. One of the things we're going to do with ESER, CPS 2.0, is start to have some very in-depth conversations on what I call 10 major challenges that are affecting children's academic success in school that are non-school related. And that's coming. And I've done a lot of research on it, but I'm just at the tip of it. And so one of the things that we talk about a little bit, but I don't want it to just keep swirling and then we don't really get down and stop it from happening and affecting more children. So let me give you the three things. Lead poisoning, brownfields, and the toxins associated with that. And then you have a nuclear plant that you're going to be taking down and trying to take down with very little control or oversight, just 35 miles from here. And that affects everybody's health possibly. But I know what lead poisoning does to children. And in nine of our district's zip codes, they're the highest risk of our city, where most of our children, particularly children of color, live. And Buffalo itself has one of the highest rates of lead poisoning in children in the country. Not just about 150 houses, okay? And I'm very concerned about the impact of, of lead poisoning on the cognitive development, the behavioral development of, of our children. And so how do we know for sure what is affecting and how it is affecting our children who live in houses, for example, that are prior to 1978? There's a lot of asbestos, there's a lot of paint, there's a lot of water piping issues here. And I just want us, when we start having these partnerships and everybody reaching out to their constituents and people that they know, we got to get this to the table. That's one of them. That's just one of 10 things that we're going to be talking about. But when you, when you add up the concentric circle of some of these challenges that are all impacting disproportionately, some of our zip codes and some of our families, it is one heck of a gauntlet that parents have to go through. And so, yeah, I'm very empathetic to, to, to our parents and to our families. But some of it is preventable, some of it preventable. What I call alterable variables versus inalterable variables. And wherever there's an alterable variable, that something could have been done or should be done, we got to bring that out in this next, in this next round of our work. So wanted to just say that. Stay tuned, 107 brownfields in Buffalo, in Erie County, 107. And 40-some, 49 are in Buffalo. And when the wind blows, like it does here, it brings all kinds of harmful toxins into the air. And so if our children are exposed to lead, they're exposed to brownfields, I've gone all over this city and driven, and there are a lot of buildings that are crumbling or that are abandoned, and, and there's things in the soil, there's things sitting right there. And I, I just want us to start to raise awareness, and then, as I said, where we can put pressure and influence on policy and decision-makers who make policy at the federal, state and local level, then that ought to be a part of our work. Education doesn't occur in a vacuum. It occurs and is impacted by a lot of different things. And, and education is one piece of this work. So I look forward to the discussions. But, but, but let's, let's grow our awareness and be research-driven on, on some of these persistent problems. But thank you to everyone tonight. I think it was, it was a very helpful discussion. And I want to also add my appreciation to Ms. Watson. I hadn't met you before, but welcome. And we look forward to continuing to build that trust and those relationships that you talked about. Very, very important. So thank you.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Rivera, for inviting Ms. Watson. So on that note, it is 8:42?
8:43.
8:43, that concludes Suit and Achievement. Have a good night.
Good night.
Thank you. Good night.
Thank you.
Thank you all. Good night.